Good evening. The October 13th meeting of the Evanston City Council will come to order. Would the Clerk please take the role?
Recording in progress.
Councilmember Kelly. Councilmember Harris.
Present.
Councilmember Isles.
Here.
Councilmember Newsma.
Here.
Councilmember Burns is currently not here. Councilmember Sephardin. Councilmember Davis is also not here. And Councilmember Rogers.
Here.
Councilmember Herakaris.
Here.
Jesus. Mayor Biss.
Here. We have a quorum present. It's my understanding that no member of council is seeking to participate remotely this evening. Is that correct?
Yes.
Okay. In that case, the next item on the agenda is my public announcements and proclamations, of which there are three. The first is for today Indigenous Peoples' Day. And because there is the powwow still ongoing at ETHS as we speak, I believe, I don't know that anyone's here to receive it, but given the occasion, I want to make sure that it's read out loud. And so, whereas Indigenous Peoples' Day was first proposed in 1977 by a delegation of Indigenous nations to the International Conference on Discrimination Against Indigenous Populations in the Americas. And whereas in 2016 Evanston became the state of Illinois's first city to recognize what was then called Columbus Day as Indigenous Peoples' Day, and continues to honor Indigenous Peoples' resilience and celebrate the diverse cultures, rich histories, and present-day experiences and contributions of the Indigenous people in Evanston and across the United States on the second Monday of October. And whereas Evanston recognizes that it was founded upon the ancestral lands of the Council of Three Fires, Ojibwe, Odawa, and Parawatame, and a dozen other Native nations whose knowledge and innovation laid the foundation for the city and region we live in today. And whereas the city of Evanston acknowledges the harm the displacement of the tribal nations from the area has caused, and the significant sacrifices Native people have made since. And whereas the United States government, the state of Illinois, and the city of Evanston honor Native communities' inherent sovereignty and unique status as sovereign tribal nations. And whereas the city of Evanston is dedicated to cultivating and sustaining partnerships with the city's indigenous institutions, such as the Gichikameen Indigenous Nations Museum, formerly the Mitchell Museum of the American Indian, and Northwestern Center for Native American and Indigenous Research, to preserve and promote Indigenous voices in Evanston and beyond. And whereas we are committed to ensuring equity and investment in the future of the city's Indigenous residents, and pay tribute to the strength, vibrancy, and immense positive impact of today's Indigenous peoples in Evanston and across the nation, now therefore I do hereby proclaim October 13th, 2025, as Indigenous Peoples' Day in the city of Evanston. The next proclamation is Peace Corps Day in Evanston. No, it's not been proclaimed yet. There's nothing to clap for yet. I could be, for instance, I could make it two-thirds of the way through, and the city council could interrupt with a motion to disapprove, which could pass unanimously because of my poor reading. So don't clap yet. It's just too risky. But, whereas in 1961 President John F. Kennedy signed an executive order establishing the Peace Corps, changing the way America sees the world and the world sees Americans. And whereas today, one of President Kennedy's most enduring legacies can be found in the over 240,000 current and returned Peace Corps volunteers, who have collectively given more than half a century of service to the cause of peace. And whereas Peace Corps volunteers have served in approximately 160 countries, bringing a wealth of practical assistance to those working to build better lives for themselves and their communities. And whereas the Chicagoland area is home to more than 2,000 returned Peace Corps volunteers, with Illinois ranking among the top states for Peace Corps recruitment. And whereas returned volunteers enriched by their experiences overseas bring a deeper understanding of other cultures and traditions back to their home communities in the United States. And whereas many returned volunteers live or work in Evanston where they have contributed to the community through public service and volunteerism. And whereas the city of Evanston is in alignment with the Peace Corps' third goal, to help promote a better understanding of other people on the part of Americans promoting cultural understanding, volunteerism, and public service. Now therefore I do hereby proclaim October 14th, 2025, as Peace Corps Day in Evanston in recognition of the 65th anniversary of the Peace Corps, and encourage Evanston citizens to acknowledge Peace Corps volunteers for their many contributions to the cause of global peace and friendship. And I'm very pleased to say that we have a number of people with us. I was first contacted by Ron Cox and helped by Leslie Pietrowski, who did a lot of work in drafting this. I want to give a shout out to our own sustainability and resilience manager Kara Pratt, a returned Peace Corps volunteer from Paraguay. And we're joined by, among others, Eleanor and Bill Ravel, who chose to structure their honeymoon in the form of Peace Corps service. And my personal favorite returned Peace Corps volunteer Karen Steinbrooke, who was in Moldova from the years of 1997 to 99. And I know many others as well. So if I could ask those who are here to accept this proclamation to come forward, I'd love to come down and present it. And now folks can clap.
And we need a little bit of more people on this side. Thank you. And then if I can have you come on this side as well, Councilmember Ravel. Former Councilmember. Okay. All right. I'll let our guys take the photo first. Send this to Leslie.
And, you know, it's kind of funny. We don't talk about it all that often here in this building, but there's a really distinguished institution of national, of global reputation in this community, Rotary International. And they're among the leaders in vaccine access and education across a number of diseases, but particularly relative to polio. And my understanding is that Bjorn Guling, the president of the Rotary Club of Evanston, will be here to accept this proclamation. So let me, let me, let me read this one as well. Whereas Rotary is a global network of 1.2 million neighbors, friends, leaders, and problem solvers who unite to take action to create lasting change in communities across the globe. And whereas the Rotary motto "Service Above Self" inspires members to provide humanitarian service, follow high ethical standards, and promote goodwill and peace in the world. And whereas Rotary in 1985 launched Polio Plus and in 1988 helped establish the Global Polio Eradication Initiative, which today includes the World Health Organization, U.S. Centers for Disease Control and Prevention, UNICEF, the Gates Foundation, and GAVI, the Vaccine Alliance, to immunize the children of the world against polio. And whereas polio cases have dropped by 99.9% since 1988, and the world stands on the threshold of eradicating the disease. And whereas to date Rotary's contributed more than $2.9 billion and countless volunteer hours to protecting more than 3 billion children in 122 countries. And whereas these efforts are providing much-needed operational support, medical staff, laboratory equipment, and educational materials for health workers and parents. And whereas, in addition, Rotary has played a major role in decisions by donor governments to contribute more than $11 billion to the effort. And whereas World Polio Day observed on October 24th serves as a moment to honor the progress made, recognize the dedication of health workers and volunteers, and renew our collective resolve to finish the job. And whereas there are over 150 Rotary members in more than four clubs throughout Evanston that sponsor service projects to address such critical issues as poverty, disease, hunger, illiteracy, and the environment in their local communities and abroad, now therefore I do hereby proclaim October 24th, 2025, as World Polio Day in Evanston. And I encourage all residents to join me and Rotary International in the fight for a polio-free world. I kind of screwed up. Because we were going to have a lengthy discussion during City Manager Public Announcements. So I'm going to call the speakers who are hoping to speak to the Peace Corps proclamation to the dais now, and then we can, then we'll do the rest of public comment in the regular slot. But I don't want to make them wait, given that the proclamation has already been presented. So we'll begin with Ron Cox, who will be followed by Sidney and David Reed, and then Don Ziegler, followed by Leslie Pietrowski.
Well, I want to thank you for recognizing us. Peace Corps changed my life. I had never been on an airplane before I went to the Peace Corps. Never been over off the continent. It changed my life. And I think it's so important what I learned living overseas and working there. And I appreciate your time and all these other people who have served. Thank you.
Thank you, Mayor Biss. My name is Don Ziegler. I'm a volunteer in recovery. Ever since my youth and Peace Corps worked, now I chair the Evanston Health Advisory Council and many other activities over the years. And Peace Corps changed my life. I was a Peace Corps volunteer in Brazil during the height of the military dictatorship there. Unfortunately, I'm seeing some similarities in our current time. But Evanston is a place I chose to live because it shares the values that led me into the Peace Corps. Thank you.
Trina James. I served in Morocco from 1991 to 93. I learned about the Peace Corps from my mother, who spoke to this body many times during her lifetime, who was one of the first volunteers into the Peace Corps in June of 1961, right out of college, and she went to Pakistan. So I saw the impact of Peace Corps changing her life and followed in her footsteps. And the mission of Peace Corps is more important today than it ever was. I think we all can see the need for that cross-cultural understanding and meeting with people where they are, understanding all these different, all the diversity. Both my mom and I lived in Muslim countries. There's a lot of misunderstanding, and particularly, you know, as we have government funding cuts and the cuts to the, to foreign assistance. Peace Corps is really soft diplomacy, so people got to know Americans, living with them and working with them, and they were our friends, and we were their friends, and they trusted us. And it's more important now than ever. Peace Corps' budget is getting cut, the recruiting is getting cut, so there's fewer and fewer people, people who are even hearing about Peace Corps. So they've, our national organization has really asked us, the returned volunteers, to step up and be recruiters, because the government funding is not there to recruit. So I encourage anyone in this room, and, you know, particularly our PCVs, to spread that word of Peace Corps. And when people are looking for opportunities to serve and learn and work alongside people from other countries, I mean, that's really the only way that, that peace and world understanding in this very polarized climate is going to make a difference. So thank you to the city of Evanston. I'm proud to be a longtime Evanston resident, although I live in Skokie now, but a graduate of Evanston Public Schools. And so thank you very much. And please, everyone, consider Peace Corps and, and speak to others about Peace Corps, because we really need people living and working in other countries. Thank you.
I'm Leslie Pietrowski. I served in the Philippines from 1983 to 1985, and I currently serve on the board of the Chicago Area Peace Corps Association, and I'm an Evanston resident. And I just want to thank the city of Evanston for the proclamation today. And I lived in Evanston in the 1980s until my landlords convinced me to join the Peace Corps. I probably would have stayed in Evanston if it hadn't been for that, but my landlords had been, they were returned Peace Corps volunteers, and they constantly were saying, "Leslie, join the Peace Corps." So I did. And my career took me to many different places, but now, recently, I moved back to Evanston with my husband. And I was just surprised, like, walking down the street, and I run into all these returned Peace Corps volunteers that I had known from decades back. And I just realized that Evanston, of course, they're in Evanston, you know, because Evanston is that kind of community where returned Peace Corps volunteers want to live because of the shared values. So I'm just very proud and excited to be an Evanston resident. Thank you.
Like your friends, Dan, my wife and I had our honeymoon in the Peace Corps. We were, Sidney and I went to India in 1966 and served two years. We were in a very rural part of India. It certainly has been an experience in both of our lives that has changed our worldview and, you know, reinforced the sense that, you know, a valuable part of life is giving back to others. And we find that Evanston is a place where that seems to be a value that's appreciated. For, for a young person, just graduating from college, the experience of living overseas in a totally different culture is of inestimable value. It's just, you know, you, you don't come back the same, and you never will be the And at the same time, it's an opportunity for us to reach out and, and connect with people in another society, and let them know that, you know, for all of the good and bad things about this country, that we're still just people, and that we can feel connected as human beings. Thank you.
Could we give the returned Peace Corps volunteers one more hand, please? Thank you so much. The next item on the agenda is the City Manager's Public Announcements.
Good evening, Mayor, members of the council, Clerk Mendoza. We have two items under City Manager Announcements. First up is the fiscal 2026 proposed budget, and we'll also have a presentation on our CIP program for 2026. I just want to make a few brief remarks about the budget. First, I'd like to thank city staff, especially the finance team, for their extensive efforts and collaboration, working over the past several months despite significant financial challenges to develop the fiscal, the proposed fiscal 26 budget. Tonight is the first of many discussions in the coming weeks as we move towards adoption. This proposed budget protects core services, invests in strategic priorities, and focuses on long-term financial sustainability. The budget reflects discussions held with the city council in April, May, September, as well as many conversations in between. The city has received over $18 million in Northwestern-related one-time permanent revenues, but these are not expected in fiscal '26 or the near future. One-time revenues have delayed service cuts or major revenue increases, which are now necessary to keep pace with inflation, wages, and pension costs. CPI has increased approximately 25% in the past five years, and the city is not immune to inflation. General fund operating expenses have been reduced by 2%, excluding city hall rent and the tri-annual tree inoculation, which reflects continued focus on cost containment. With that, I'm going to turn it over to CFO Hitesh Desai, who will then hand it off to Deputy CFO Clayton Black.
Let's give it a minute, until it comes up there. Okay. Okay. Thank you. Yeah. Let's move to the next slide, which is the very first one. Thank you, Manager Stowe. Good evening, Mayor, and the members of the city council. It's that time of the year again for us, the budget time. So these are the high topics. I'll cover some of those first few summary slides, and then I'll give it to Clayton Black, who would go into the, some of those slides which are in details. And at the end, we would be here to answer any and all questions related to that. We have this kind of facilitated, to facilitate the discussion, we have some, you know, presentation slides. These are the main topics. What are the changes to the budget presentation? Overall budget, general fund 2025 projection, how we are doing this year, kind of in context to the future projection for the next year and a couple of years out. Key budget topics, the property tax levy. As you know, that we have proposed some property tax levy increase, and you would get kind of more context in terms of the, where we would have been without this, you know. Second thing is the ad waste and special pick-up fee increase. There is a small, yeah, increase to that in the proposed budget. Public safety pensions continues to grow, so we have a couple of slides on the public safety pensions. Capital improvement program, we just have one slide, at least in this side, about the total capital improvement program, but Lara would then cover in detail all the projects, and some of the other fund highlights. And then the budget calendar, obviously, kind of this is the first conversation here, all the way until the, I think, the anticipated adoption date of all the tax levies on November 24th. In between, we will have budget hearing, truth and taxation hearing, a lot of ward meetings to get the feedback from the people and the city council. The next one is, yeah, this is the one big change, where we have created Parks and Recreation Fund. This used to be part of the general fund, but just to kind of promote transparency. Obviously, yeah, during the last many years at the finance and budget, and from the people, at the ward meeting, we hear the word transparency, you know? And we thought, let's do it. And this is kind of in line with, I don't know, some of them might, you know, that we created Human Service Fund many years back in, I think, 16, 17, when it started. And after a couple of years, we realized that still we have a challenge getting the right money for it, out of the tax levy. So we separated the Human Service Tax Levy in 20 budget, 2020 budget for the first time, so that they don't have to compete for the, you know, programs. And, and that helps, yeah, the city council, previous city council, and even the current one, you know, that Human Service Fund has a kind of now dedicated tax levy, so that. So on the similar line, you know, we thought that, okay, have a transparency to kind of cover all the operational program, you know, activities, revenues, expense, all the programs and services. We thought that it would be better to have a Parks and Recreation Fund. And obviously, this would allow for the tracking of the performance, resource equipment, and all those kind of things. Next one is, again, yeah, the summary items for the overall budget. 26 proposed budget, around $342 million. You see the numbers in the bottom, yeah, in the parentheses, that excluding the operating transfers. And why we do it, these are the transfers between two funds. So if we include it, it kind of is a duplicative number, you know, and just kind of inflates the total budget amount. So that's why we, to give you a better number, more accurate number, we kind of give you the number of $342 million, excluding the operating transfers. And compared to 25 adopted budget, $338 million, so not much difference, you know, kind of pretty much a couple of millions. And fiscal '24 budget was around $355 million, again, excluding the transfers. Next one is, yeah, this is the reasons for the budget increase. Why? Because yes, there is some increase, if you look at the fiscal '21 to '26. But we have like, kind of pointed those things to the like salary and benefits, obviously. You know, we had the union contracts in '22, starting with '23, and I think with this increase is given to all the union and non-union employees. One of the, yeah, biggest thing was the salary benefits. Capital spending, yes, continues to grow. And not only the programs continue to grow, but there's inflation in that too, you know? That's why we have to spend more dollars to kind of do the same thing. Lara can address those things in her, and capital. ARPA was done, yes, we received the ARPA grants, so obviously we spent a lot of money for the last, you know, three, four years, so that was one of the reasons of increase. Transfers have increased, pension contributions increased. You would see the 9.3 pension funding policy was adopted a few years back, where we changed from 90% to 100%. Housing, sustainability fund, and some of the small ones, the debt service tips and others. Next one, I think, okay, Clayton, you want to?
Clayton Black, Deputy CFO. Good evening. So Hitesh has walked through sort of a summary of the overall total budget. I'm going to zero in now and spin some slides talking just about the general fund. This slide shows the same projections that we shared with you last month regarding how we think the general fund will finish this year. Not much has changed, sort of two small updates since last month. It was a really strong year, or a strong month of sales tax returns, so that was really positive. At the same time, we've seen our vacancy rate go down a little bit more across citywide staffing levels, so we've seen some anticipated savings probably dropping off there a little bit from what we told you last month, but they net out a little bit. And so the projections we shared with you last month, which were based on mid-year numbers, are likely still in line with where we, how, with where we think we'll finish this year. So in 2025, we think the general fund is projected to end with a deficit between $1.8 and $7 million, which is better than the budgeted deficit of $11 million. The budget that's in front of you has a handful of expense adjustments, expense changes, expense proposals. One large increase in the general fund is a $700,000 increase to the required annual pension contribution for public safety pensions. To stay on track for full funding of our pensions by 2040, we're looking at a cost of $30.3 million next year against the proposed property tax levy of $23 million. So still continuing to lean into reserves to continue to make that full pension contribution. The budget includes all contractual and non-union wage increases. This is the fourth and final year of all those union contracts that were agreed to for 2023. Those contracts expire at the end of next year, but the budget does include those, that final year of wage increases. In terms of new operating requests, there are very few that, in the budget. The biggest one is the annual rent to operate civic, this civic center here at 909 Davis. The decision here to rent this building helps to mitigate cost uncertainty and operational disruptions while planning for the long-term plan of this building, police and fire headquarters, as well as the old civic center. But this is the first month, first year of rent at this facility, and that's an annual cost of about $2.6 million in the general fund. We're also looking at the triennial tree inoculation. This is a large expense that we see every three years of about $700,000. of about $700,000 to help keep our elm trees, to help our elm trees hold up against the Dutch elm disease. Finally, two new positions in the general fund, a part-time content specialist in the communications department and a full-time public works maintenance worker, too, in the Greenways Division. This budget included very few new position requests. It's just these 1.5 positions, as well as two care team positions that we'll talk about later. At the same time, there are a handful of positions that are frozen throughout the general fund in order to help keep the cost down and to allow these two positions, as well as some of the other expenses. Finally, when you do leave out the civic center and this tree inoculation, all other operating items in the general fund are actually down 2% from last year. So we worked really hard in order to offset these increases to cost by holding the line on services, supplies, and other expenses in order to make room for some of these new expenses. Last year, I think we held the line at 0%. This year, we reduced by 2%. So it just continues to show the work we've done to try to contain costs from an operating standpoint. This slide shows revenues in the general fund. As it shows, property taxes comprise 22% of general fund revenues. Other taxes, this is hotel taxes, food and beverage tax, or not food and beverage, sales taxes, liquor taxes, basically all other taxes that our residents pay comprise about 47% of revenues. On the expense side, not much has changed here, but salaries, benefits, payroll taxes, health insurance, as well as public safety pension contributions comprise about 81% of general fund expenses. So again, anytime we talk about containing costs and containing expenses, we're working with a general fund where significant portion of our expenses, by a far margin, is related to people costs, hard costs related to our people. This light gray up here is services and supplies. This includes things like electricity, natural gas, the rent at this building, travel, training, operating equipment. So this is, this amount here is, represents the non-people amount, and this is the transfers, the inter-fund transfers, which Hitesh said we exclude from some of the overall numbers so that we don't double count expenses. So how do we balance this general fund with these new expenses? Prior to adding in these new expenses, simply projecting out revenues, including wage increases, just at the baseline level, we were looking at a $14.5 million deficit. This is comparable to the $11 million deficit that we had this year. But after you consider an additional year of wage increases, we're looking at a $14.5 million deficit. And then these are the measures we took in order to balance the general fund. The, some of these measures include use of fund balance. So at the end of the day, we're still using $9.1 million in general fund reserves, which are available thanks to some of the one-time revenues that Manager Stowe spoke about in his opening remarks. As Hitesh mentioned, there's a proposed property tax levy increase focusing on parks and on public safety pensions to help offset some of those increases that we've seen to that contribution. These are the new expenses that I mentioned. We did take a look at expenses, and we're able to cut or reallocate about 1.8 million in general fund expenses. These include things like freezing a handful of positions, transferring certain expenses out and reallocating them in enterprise funds where they perhaps make more sense to pay for them there, as well as actual cuts to whether it be seasonal employees or other expenses. We found about $1.8 million that we were able to remove from the general fund. And then finally, we're implementing a 4% vacancy rate. We're currently sitting around a vacancy rate of about 4.4%. We expect that to kind of be where we are, are moving in the next year. We've seen it go down a little bit in the last month or two. So we're assuming a 4% vacancy rate. This is down from the 6% vacancy rate that we had in this year's budget, where we did overshoot the mark a little bit as we're seeing around about a 4.5% to 5% vacancy rate this year in the aggregate. At the very bottom, I mentioned zero-based budgeting. So that was a project we started a couple of months ago. It's a very tight schedule and a huge amount of work to be done. They are, at this point, planning on a presentation in late October with city council to give you an idea of what that work looks like. You should get an idea from that presentation what options may exist if you want to consider implementing those either in the new year, you know, as part of the adopted budget. So these are some slides which we put together. They're showing our fund balance projection. We have three scenarios. This first one shows our current situation with the budget as it is proposed. You can see this year's budget proposes a $4 million property tax increase, as I mentioned, for parks and public safety pensions to begin addressing this structural deficit that exists within the general fund. We've seen salary and benefit costs go up by 27 million, about 39%. We've seen our public safety pension contributions go up by about 9.2 million, or about 43% since 2021, compared to this tax levy increase of $4 million. So we've seen close to $30 million of increases in expenses in the general fund without touching our property tax levy. And that, that model is just not sustainable, which is why this year's budget includes that, that proposed increase. This isn't fully addressing the structural deficit, but it does begin to make some progress on that. Scenario two shows what would happen without that proposed property tax increase. In the absence of one-time revenues next year, this shows what would happen unless we're replacing that property tax levy with a sustainable alternative. As you can see, we still finish 2026 with some excess reserves, but it further exacerbates the structural deficit and delays an even larger potential property tax increase into the future. The fund balance fully exhausted in the year 2028. This third scenario really sheds light on the existence of this structural deficit that we talk about. In this, we've pulled out those one-time revenues from Northwestern. And you can see this flat fund balance over the three years is really driven by those one-time revenues from Northwestern. When you pull them out, you can start to see this drop off from our 2023, 2022 fund balance. And this shows even with the property tax increase as proposed, without those permit revenues we received, we would fall below the fund balance policy in next year's budget, even with the use of fund balance, even with the property tax increase. So this really shows the drop off, and we can't, we can't talk about it enough how much these revenues have really distorted our true financial picture. So now we have eight slides on property tax levy. I will try to get through them as quickly as possible, but recognizing that it's probably one of the biggest talking points of this budget cycle, we, we wanted to make sure we went through it. This shows the proposed tax levy in the budget. You can see a $6.5 million increase to the levy across the city's levy. $1 million of that in parks, $3 million of that in public safety pensions, and then a significant increase in human services fund. And what, what's important to note here is this is the cost to provide these services in 2026. This is the cost to provide those services back in 2021. We've seen an expansion in programming through the mayor's summer youth program, the care team, our outreach team, and that is the actual cost. This is the sole revenue to that fund, with the exception of some grants. So the revenue in has to match the expenses out, and that's why we're proposing this property tax levy increase in the human services fund. This shows what the levy would need to be in the absence of any reserves. So you can see where the $1 million property tax in Parks and Rec would need to be increased to about 2.7 million. This is the full contribution to police and fire, public safety pensions. And you can see in debt service fund, we're using about 1.2 million in existing fund balance in order to cover our debt service. So we're not proposing a 36% increase to this property tax levy. Fortunately, we do have these reserves. As I talked about, they're available because of the perfect storm of one-time revenues, largely from the Northwestern permit projects that we've talked about. They won't last forever, but they help us delay massive, large increases, at least for this year. We'll talk about this a lot. A lot of folks don't understand, but when you pay your property tax, for every dollar you pay, 16 cents go to the city of Evanston, 3 cents go to the Evanston Public Library. A majority of that tax bill goes to our, our school districts. When you compare Evanston's tax rate to our neighbors, you can see this is our 2023 tax composite rate, which is our current rate that is available. You can see Evanston has a lower rate than all of our peers. And what that means is, on a $500,000 home in Evanston, your tax bill is going to be markedly lower than your tax bill in any of these other communities, all things equal. Now, we acknowledge your home looks quite a bit different in Evanston at $500,000 compared to your home in, say, Bloomington or Skokie or Oak Park. But certainly, all other things equal, same home value, you're going to be looking at a lower property tax bill here in Evanston. This property tax increase equates to about a $269 increase per year on the average home. Keep in mind, this is after five straight years of $0 increases year over year, over year, over year, over year. And now we're looking at a one, one-year adjustment increase of about $269 for the average median, for the median home in Evanston. Couple more slides. This shows the proposed property tax levy and how it is to be allocated. As you can see, this blue bar represents the amount of the property tax levy that can be used for core government services. And you can see back in 2013, it was 12.3 million. This year, it's 14 million. So we've seen just a $1.7 million increase in the levy for core government services in 12 years. So while it's been largely flat overall, that number has been even flatter. Most of the increases here in the gray dedicated towards public safety pensions and meeting their contributions there. I will skip ahead. Fine, so that's all the slides on the property tax levy. We'll be posting this on the website and meeting with residents in the ward meetings ahead, and can go into much, much more detail on, on the property tax levy and answer any questions there. The only other fee increase that's included in the budget is focused on solid waste, and it's around yard waste pickup and special pickup. The, the team is going to be presenting on this at the Finance and Budget Committee meeting to go into more detail. Essentially, it's, it's an increase to, for, for yard waste, we only cover close to 30% of what it costs us to actually provide that service. This increase intends to get us closer to the actual cost of providing the yard waste service, but nowhere close to our actual cost. And it's a similar picture for a special pickup. Currently, there's two free pickups a year, and one, a resident can call in a special pickup and pay up to $100 for up to three cubic yards of waste. This moves to a everybody-in model where it's a dollar a month. No more free pickups, but everybody can participate and as long as they call ahead, it's included in this $1 monthly charge. So again, more detail on that at our Finance and Budget Committee meeting, and the staff from Public Works can answer questions on that. And finally, we were looking at a 13.5% rate increase in water. But after evaluating our current model, given the fund balance and timing of capital projects, that can be delayed for next year, and sewer, water and sewer rates can be held flat as part of next year's budget. Talked a bit about public safety pensions. As I mentioned, the contribution for 2026 is 30.3 million, up from 20.7 million. But you can see, from '22 to '23, we made the jump and started fully funding our pensions, and that was about a $4.3 million increase here in order to make that full 100% contribution. And then in 2025, we saw this $4 million jump as wage increases were baked into the rate calculations, and we saw this. And now we're looking at a $700,000 increase for next year, which is probably going to be in the norm as we move forward. You can see the property tax levy used to cover a significant portion of the contribution. Over the last three years, we've been able to make $20 million in contributions to public safety pensions from other funding sources. We're continuing to do that in next year's budget with 7.3 million coming from other funding sources. But those one-time revenues, as I've already talked about, have a limited life, and we need to start finding a way to make sure we can continue to sustain this contribution moving forward, which is why you see this increase in the property tax levy focused on pensions. This covers just a few other fund highlights. Spend a lot of our time talking on the general fund because it is the city's biggest fund, but we don't want to neglect other funds where there's activity and items of concern. In the Parks and Recreation Fund, as Hitesh talked about, this new fund helps isolate those programmatic expenses of the department. The fund is balanced with a $1 million property tax increase and a $5.6 million transfer from the general fund. And the Human Services Fund, as I talked about, the cost of programs totals 6.6 million. That's for the mayor's summer youth, care, mental health board allocations, outreach, and our health department programs. And the primary funding source for this fund is the property tax levy. So that property tax levy, in order to provide these services, needs to be fairly close to this number in order to continue to do that. This fund does have the only other two new positions that are in the proposed budget. They're two care team responders, and the Parks and Rec team can speak to that in greater detail. Our Good Neighbor Fund, this serves as the, as the pass-through fund for the annual contribution from Northwestern. We transfer those funds to the general fund, sustainability fund, and affordable housing fund. And then finally, one other new fund in our budget is the Pro-Housing Fund. It's a new fund largely created as a placeholder for the $7 million Pro-Housing grant that we've received from HUD. Won't spend time on the, on the CIP, as I know Lara has that covered next, but a total of 90.5 million for CIP spending. And then this is the budget calendar. So this is just the first of many discussions. We have the public hearing in a couple of weeks. We've invited all council members to participate in joint ward meetings in late October, early November. Truth and taxation hearing on November 3rd. Introduction of tax, introduction of tax levy ordinances on the 10th, and a target adoption on November 24th with the filing deadline with Cook County in late December. That is our presentation. Happy to answer any questions.
Thank you, Clayton. Thank you, Hitesh. Questions for the finance team?
Councilmember Kelly.
Thank you. A couple of questions. So you said, let's see, that those were just the two new positions? I thought there was also one in Greenways, which I was happy to see. When you, back to there, you said those were the only two new positions?
Those are the only two positions outside of the general fund.
Outside the general fund, okay.
And the general fund are the 1.5 positions, the one in Greenways and the communications position.
Okay. And then I had a question regarding the increase in the solid waste fund. So I'm looking at your fund balances as of, I guess it would be the third, second quarter, 6/30? That's the most recent we have, right? So I see for the solid waste fund, the required fund balance was 1.1 million, which we had, and then we have almost a $3 million excess in the solid waste. So why, I'm trying to understand that excess. And usually that, traditionally, that will go up by the end of the year. So I'm trying to understand why we need to raise fees if we have a $3 million excess as of?
I don't have what you have in front of you in front of me, so I'm not sure what the excess is. And I'll add, we'll do a budget memo on any questions we can't fully answer at this meeting. But within the fund, there, it's very likely there are large garbage trucks that are on order, that are on a back.
Well, that would contradict. I mean, it's, there are, there's a restricted category, assigned category. These, this is excess. So by definition, this is not assigned money. So I just want to be careful that we're very clear and we don't start pretending like, you know, excess is assigned.
Again, I don't have what you have in front of me, but I'll, if you want to share it with us, we'll provide a memo on that topic.
It's from your, you know, it's your report from the fund balances as of 6/30/25.
Fund balances as of 6/30. And so again, and it's important to note that the solid waste fund receives a property tax levy. It's the only enterprise fund in the entire city that's not fully sustainable with just user fees. Our cost to provide yard waste services, we pay the vendor $11.50 per month. We currently charge residents a little more than $3 per month.
Sure, no, I just want.
So it's a, it's a losing operation. I know there's been staff vacancies within that work group, too. But we can provide a more thorough answer.
Right, so it's about $3 million in excess. That's not assigned as of 6/30. And then, let's see, a question regarding, so I see here, and again, I'm referring to your report of 6/30. So in the, in the general fund, we had the required fund balance of 25 million, which was our 16.6, in excess, over 13 million. And that will traditionally get larger before the end of the year. And I'm only looking at those funds that aren't restricted. So I'm not considering like motor fuel tax fund, none of the TIFs, or the Capital Improvement Fund. I see like for the sewer fund, that as of the end of, as of '71, it was over $9 million in excess unassigned. And again, in the solid waste, it was about 3 million. And in the, the water fund, it was about over 9 million, bringing a total of the, the reserves, 78 million with 38 million that's unassigned. So I just, I just want to refer to our pension, 38 million unassigned, unrestricted. And that's not counting motor fuel tax or any of the funds that are assigned. So that's unrestricted excess reserves. So that's unrestricted excess reserves. And, and our pension policy does state if there are not excess reserves available, then we raise the property tax. So I would contend here that it looks to me like we absolutely have those excess reserves. You know, perhaps we need to raise the taxes to cover the rent here for 2.5 million. That's an expense, but we certainly can cover without raising that line item on our public safety pensions. So, and then I also have a question regarding the library. Can we get a breakdown on, see, I'm a little bit concerned about some of the, that's a large increase on the library at 10%. Want to support the library, but I am concerned about duplication of services. I know one of the items that we were told that constitutes that is an HR director for the library. So I am concerned about that, that we would consider duplicating that service. So I hope we can get more clarity on that. I don't want to see us with redundant services. I think that's it for the moment. Thank you.
Councilor Nusma.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. We've got five minutes each, right? Good. I've got five questions. Hopefully, we'll be able to take no more than a minute each on average. So the first question, let's go to page seven of the presentation, and this is about the new Parks and Rec Fund. Actually, we'll try page five. Now, it looks like your pages, your page numbers are different than mine. Without referring then to a specific page, the general fund projections you're showing are the budgeted numbers for '26 and the projected numbers for '25. Are they apples-to-apples comparison if '26 does not include Parks and Rec and 2025 does?
Yeah. Recognizing this is the first year we did, so this shows these numbers are apples-to-apples. When we say general fund, at least for this year, we're talking primarily about general fund plus Parks and Rec fund so that we're not artificially taking expenses down by 16 million in the general fund and make, and distorting the picture. So at least for this year, most of the slides, when we talk general fund, are apples-to-apples, general fund and Parks and Rec, general fund and Parks and Rec.
Got it. Thank you. And so the new general fund that we're contemplating is only for operating expenses, recreation expenses, specifically excludes capital expenses. What's the reasoning behind that?
This first year, we wanted to focus on programmatic expenses within the department. So, you know, we got a lot of feedback last year from Finance and Budget Committee about, looking at our community centers, which ones are gaining money, which ones are losing money, which programs are worth continuing, which programs may not be making enough money, which ones are people not attending. And so this first year, it's focused just on programmatic expenses and revenues of the department and also helps us look a little more closely with our peers. So Finance and Budget Committee selected seven peer communities. Of those seven, only Bloomington, Illinois, has its own park district within its operation like us. All other, all those communities have a separate park district and their park fund looks a lot more like what we're proposing here. It's way more economical to keep the Parks Department under the city umbrella, and that's not what's proposed here. It's just allowing us to put a better eye on the cost to provide our parks programs and the revenues that those programs come, bring in so that we can see what the gap is and help put attention to make sure.
Definitely the right direction. That's just operating expenses.
Eventually, we can go to capital.
Capital expenses are something maybe we could put into that fund at some future date.
Right. Yep.
Got it. Okay. Just another point of clarification on the overall budget chart. This is the one with the horizontal bar chart, that one right there. Capital spending is 38 million, debt service is 3.3 million. Is debt service just the interest?
Principle and interest.
Can you explain what go, what, what's the difference then between capital spending and debt service and how they interact?
This is the expense for the project itself. And so if Lara builds a park for $3 million, that $3 million expense is considered capital. And then over the next 20 years, we repay the GO bonds associated with that park and that's the, considered the debt service expense.
All right. So the debt service, we're kind of double counting here, showing twice expenses that we're really only paying for once.
I mean, what happens is that just in the same example, like $3 million parks, you know, and we spend, say, $1.8 million out of that or whatever, then they spend 1.2 next year. So that becomes actual spending, right? So that's the expense. Plus, the additional expenses because we borrowed the funds to build that, $3 million. So annual debt service goes up too.
Mm-hmm.
You know, there's a two component of the cost when we borrow the fund, actual cost plus the debt service cost. And so that's why both has gone up and as I mentioned earlier, capital spending has gone up because of the programs as well as the big factor post-COVID is the inflation. You know, the cost has gone up, what, 25 to 40% in some of those things? So that's why capital spending has gone up. At the same time, as we issued the bonds in 2020, '21, then in '24, and obviously the rates were higher, I think in '24, a little bit higher than what we got in '20. So the debt service has gone up too.
Okay. Thank you. Next question is on our pension payments. And Clayton, you noticed, you noted that we are drawing down on reserve funds to make our pension, our obligated pension payments. Those are general fund reserves that we're drawing down.
Right. And again, these, I mean, the intent was, I think what Councilmember Kelly kind of touched on earlier, when we have the funds, the excess funds in water sewer funds, that's not kind of a, those are the enterprise funds, you know? And obviously, you would see when Lara talks about the capital projects, water and sewer both have big projects coming up in the pipeline for the next two to five years, particularly with the water, I think, you know? And sewer has it, I think she mentioned the sewer fund balance too. And we talked to the department and they have like, yeah, a lot more than what we have in the fund balance for the sewer too. And we just want to be careful about the thing that we don't want the rate increase when we spend $5, $50 million, you know? So that's why, and again, it's an enterprise fund, so at least it's financially not prudent to move the funds, you know, from waterfront towards some of these kind of expenses.
Okay. And then on our headcount, we had talked about increasing the number of folks on our care team is, in this proposed budget, that is off the table.
Two staff, two people are included.
We're adding two? Was, did I miss that on here? Okay.
That was Councilmember Kelly's first question there too.
I'm sorry.
Was about the two in care team. Two additional full-time care team responders bring the total to six.
Got it. And the Human Services Fund.
Right.
So it was two additional, two other FTEs added to the general fund.
1.5 FTE, yeah. One in Greenways and then a part-time communications position.
Thank you for clarifying that. And last and not least, with regards to deferring an increase in water sewer rates, it's going to feel good for 2026. Are we setting ourselves up for some more pain later on if we're going to make a bigger jump in those rates in '27 or '28?
I mean, we have increased the rates of the water and reduced the sewer rate. At the same time, what Councilmember Kelly said, we looked at the fund balance, you know? And obviously, the capital projects are not coming up in the very next year. You know, it's over the next three to five to seven years, particularly in water has a long term. So we decided to use the draw up on the fund balance and particularly, we decided to draw up on the fund balance because the interest rates are still high. And there is a hope that by the time, like suppose if we want to issue the bonds next year or year after that, you know, we might have half of what we get today. And it's a huge savings, you know? And so that was the thing, after talking to the, you know, department, looking at the financial situation, looking at the interest rate environment, we thought that it would be kind of at least prudent for one more year to kind of draw.
Okay, great. I guess what I'm, my perspective here is that we've held off on increasing our general fund property tax levy for five or six years, and now boom, all of a sudden, we have to make a pretty big step, you know, 13%. That's going to hurt. I don't want to have similar pain, although for probably less impactful dollar amount with our water and sewer rates, if we hold off, hold off, hold off, and then all of a sudden, we have to increase it. We did that, that was practiced for, for years and years, and we finally got back on a track where we're kind of keeping up with inflation with, you know, minor increases each year. I just want to make sure we're not setting ourselves up for, you know, short-term gain and have a long-term pain.
Absolutely not. This is like an annual practice where we sit down with the water department and other, you know, look at the cash situation, grants available, other programs, any big CIP spending in the pipeline. So all those, yeah, we look at those factors, but you're right, yeah, we just don't want to do that, yeah.
Got it. Thank you. That's all for now.
Councilmember Rogers, followed by Sufferton.
Thank you. I just have a couple of quick questions. I kind of want to pick up on something Councilmember Nusma was saying about the parks and the CIP. And understanding the operating is, are our spaces profitable, I think it's important that we get CIP in there as quickly as possible because that is a large expense. And if a building is costing us a lot of money, I don't care how much we're generating in income if, if it's costing us twice as much to keep the building open. So I would just encourage us getting that in as quickly as we possibly can to get a true picture of what our parks cost us.
Yep.
So that's just a note on that. Secondly, could you explain just real briefly again, the special pickup fee, what that change is going to be for this year proposed?
That's for the bulk pickup?
Right.
So currently, residents have access to two free pickups.
Right.
That are on scheduled dates. And they can do a on-call pickup that can cost up to $100, depending on the amount of.
Right.
Material that they need to dispose of. This moves to a model where everyone pays $1 a month and has access to the on-call service at no additional cost.
Okay. So if somebody in my condo building, for example, has a mattress, they just call as a special pickup, there's no additional fee added into our water sewer bill?
So you said condo building. I want to make sure from Public Works that it's apartments, condos, single families.
We're kind of the weird ones out there.
So I, I don't want to.
We're the homeowners who don't own land.
Right. Single family, I know for a fact that that's what's being proposed. I would want to check with Public Works to see if the rules are different for condo.
Okay. Yeah, because I'm just curious, because what we've seen happen as, as those prices have increased, we get a lot of fly dumping in, in our areas.
Right. And that's what this is aimed at deterring, is a dollar a month to give people access to the service they need should stop that fly dumping.
Okay.
And help people out.
All right. And then I have a bunch of other questions, but I'll submit those because I'm not going to put you on the spot with asking you to give me answers without being prepared for them.
Sounds good. Thank you.
All right, thanks.
No, and that's the good thing. I'm like, just, yeah, if you have like, you know, any questions, which we need, like analysis tables, all that. I mean, we have seen that budget memo works so efficiently, you know? And everybody is accessing, instead of emailing one-on-one, you know, we post it on the website every weekend, you know, for the next six weeks. On Thursday or Friday of every week, we will post all the budget memos. So that would be a great help.
Councilmember Sufferton, followed by Harris.
That was my exact question. Like logistically, how do you want to handle budget memos?
I mean, you just send us an email or all that, and instead of responding you via email, we would include it as a budget memo and post it on the website.
And do you anticipate doing those in chronological order or in order of complexity?
No, no, it doesn't matter. We just go by the subject matters, so that's easier, like say, property tax, debt, capital projects, like those things.
Okay.
I think we have done that, right, by this kind of categories?
Yes, with the caveat that, I know a couple of years ago, I got a memo request from a council member that required hours of intensive analytical work. And so those types of memos we'll get to, but there is a bit of prioritization, chronicling, and making sure that if you ask a question, that it's something generally, everybody will be interested to hear.
If I may, come to your defense. The purpose of the budget memos is to prevent questions from being asked multiple times, to prioritize answers to things that will inform the rest of the discussion around the budget. I think it's perfectly reasonable that anything that requires deeper analysis than what's expected to be reasonable would get kicked backwards or down the pile. But I want to make sure that we have discussion that is informed as we go through this process deeper and deeper. When do we expect to have the Public Works zero-based budgeting contribution here?
So Raff, tell us, we'll be here to present, there's planning on presenting at the end of October. It's a huge undertaking, a huge project that we started in July. They've collected a lot of data, a lot of research, have a lot of information to share. It didn't meet the deadline to get incorporated into this budget, but they will be here at the end of October, and the city council can determine at that time what they want to do with the information that they present. I don't know that it'll be a completely final finished product at that time, but we at least wanted to get something in front of the council before budget adoption. So you're aware of what implications may or may not exist in that project.
Okay. And for that to break even, the fee we are paying them that they need to cover in savings is $100,000?
That was around the contract cost.
Okay. Got it. All right. So the budget memo process, submit them, they'll be posted every Friday, is that?
It'll be posted on Friday.
Okay. And then on parks, there's always a little bit of a tricky thing because actual park maintenance is Public Works. Is that line clear in this budget or is there blurriness when we talk about the Parks and Recreation Fund?
It remains with the Public Works Department and the general fund right now as part of this proposed budget. And the capital costs remain in the capital improvement fund.
Right.
This is strictly, everything that was Parks and Rec before is now in the Parks and Rec Fund. The budget itself changes nothing operationally. It's just an accounting tool to help provide better transparency into their programs.
So as it pertains to a resident's experience, if they're dissatisfied or very satisfied with the camp that their kid attends, that's directly Parks and Rec. If they're dissatisfied with the lack of investment in a park, that's capital. And if they're dissatisfied because on Saturday, they were at the park and it was dirty, that's Public Works.
Correct.
Okay. Because I think they're all very related and in budget time, it's important that we make sure that we don't shortchange any of those. I think that's all I've got. I guess, and this is a budget memo preview, but like what things did we start under ARPA that we're going to seek to be continuing when the ARPA money is out?
I don't know if Sarah is still.
She can't, that door is jacked up. I mean, I could, I could ask that question as a budget memo. That's probably more of a budget memo question.
That would be good.
I think one of the concerns is like that we start things with a clear funding source that runs out, and then we continue the things, and that's one of the things that leads to the swelling.
I can tell you at this time, the budget, to the best of my knowledge, in 2026, doesn't include anything that was ARPA that's now not ARPA, other than perhaps things like participatory budgeting, which may be something that I think is in the CIP. And it's a concept that continues to have life in the city, in the city CIP. There may be other things like that, but there's not staff that were hired using ARPA money that remain in the, in the proposed budget using city dollars.
But like, and this isn't ARPA specific, but with the care team, which was created recently.
Right.
The expansion is a pure expansion. There's no contraction anywhere else in the city headcount to account for it.
No, no. We've, as I mentioned earlier, we are holding some positions in a frozen state in next year's budget to help offset some of the cost increases for positions. But it's not a deliberate, like, we're going to eliminate or freeze this position so we can add two care team positions.
Right. I mean, we, we didn't say we're eliminating two positions at this salary so that we can add two positions at this salary.
Correct.
All right. Thank you.
Councilmember Harris.
Thank you so much, Chair. So I think you answered a number of my questions, so I won't belabor them. I was trying to understand the zero base, why that wasn't in here. Is that delay because of us or because of the contractors?
I, I think it's a true.
Just the work involved, you know? It's not the easy task. It's a lot of things. And even when they presented in October, and obviously, you know, the Public Works has a lot, three or four divisions with many employees. So we didn't want just a half kind of, you know, a big thing. And, yeah, I thought, maybe we thought that, okay, this would be a quick thing, you know? But after hearing the council and all that, we thought that, no, we want a better product, you know, a kind of detailed report on that. So obviously, yeah, and the council would have a chance to look at it on, I think, the 29th, last meeting in October, you know?
Okay. So a deeper dive in that, does that now come back to us as a cost for us because, or that's?
I mean, we don't know. They would overall present it, but again, I think they mentioned initially that they won't have like any kind of a mention about layoffs or anything like that, you know? There could be some process improvement thing that the way we do then and could do the different way. But yeah, we don't, may not see any drastic, I think that's what they are planning, right?
And I think Councilmember Harris, your question is, are we going to pay more because it's, no, the contract cost was an all-in fixed cost of $100,000. So there's no cost increase because it's not ready.
Okay.
And I, if I could just add, staff has moved at the speed of the consultant. So we have not, to my knowledge, we have not created any delays for the consultant.
Okay, yeah, I just want, we just had somebody who came with a contract, got a little deeper dig, and now it's costing us more, so I wanted to understand that.
Yeah, the fixed memo, yes, you're right.
Okay, I have more of a statement, we've held taxes flat for five years.
Yes.
Say it again?
Yes, five years, yes.
Can you say that in the mic, a little hot, more?
Yep, or I would use the word, I think, we kept the taxes flat, nearly flat, because one time, I think it was a half a million dollar increase five years back, but that's kind of just, but other than that, yeah, if you look at the last four years, yeah, the flat.
Nothing has stayed flat, and again, I don't necessarily want to raise taxes, but now we find ourselves probably having to do that at a high amount, because we wouldn't take that chance last year, because everybody was up for election, now we are going to suffer, because would you say, would your estimate, estimation be, had we increased last year, we wouldn't have had to increase as much this year?
Yes.
Yes, no, maybe?
Yes.
Okay, so, nothing stays the same, and the beautiful place that we live in Evanston, we have so many social services that we provide people, we do so many things in the community, we here and the community have to make a decision, and I think we've talked about this before, that there's a number of avenues in which we have to come, stop, start, and pause some things, and the start is potentially increasing taxes, the stop is, what does the community consider something they want us to cut when our dollars don't quite match? When I go to the grocery store, not often, if I can't afford something, I have to put something back, so the city, our residents, we have to make some of those decisions, and that's the place that we find ourselves, and hopefully, in our ward meetings and our emails, people will be explaining that to us in our listening sessions, what that looks like, what should we stop doing, where do we cut, where do we fall back, and where do we increase, and I've heard residents say, if this is going to stop, I'm willing to pay more, because I need this one thing to happen, but I've also heard residents say, I can't afford another tax increase, and that's very true, the dollar shows where the majority of the Evanston dollar goes, it's almost 70%, am I correct, almost 70% goes to the schools, thank you.
Councilmember Hatares.
Thank you, Mayor, I just want to take this time to let residents of the Third, Eighth, and Ninth Wards know that our budget meeting will be on Wednesday, October 29th, at 6:00 PM, with the exact location to be determined, so I'm sure you will hear from Councilmember Isles, Rogers, and myself when we get that straightened up, I'll have some questions that I think are more appropriate for a budget memo, but thanks for this work, and also, thank you for beginning this process much earlier than in years past, I think this is year, I'm bad with time, but I think this is year three for me, and it's gotten progressively better, and it's always better when we do the work and spread it out over the year, and so I just want to thank staff for doing that.
At this time, no one is requesting to speak for a first time, so we go back to Councilmember Kelly with 1:40 left.
Thank you, so a question about the Parks and Rec, so I'd heard a lot of concern about Greenways, wanting Greenways to be under the org chart for Parks and Rec, but I never heard people saying, oh, we need a separate Parks and Rec fund, so I just want to make that point that, but you're saying that Greenways won't be in Parks and Rec? I mean, that was what I heard over and over again, first of all, that we need more, so I'm glad we're increasing, that we're hiring an additional Greenways person, but that was definitely because so much of, if not all, you know, Greenways tends to our Parks and Rec program, and I know frequently, the board couldn't discuss issues that involved, so is, Greenways will not be in the Parks and Rec?
So, yeah, I just wanted to clarify the additional position that we requested for Greenways that will be on the Greenways team, so it'll help with parks maintenance.
But it won't be in the Parks and Rec fund?
Correct.
Right, correct, as.
So that wasn't, I never heard anyone clamoring about wanting to have a separate.
As Councilmember Rogers kind of touched on, and so, the maintenance and the capital program, we still kept it in, what we heard, I think, and you at the Finance Budget Committee, it was more like programmatic, and some of those were like, okay, losing money and all that.
Right, I.
And this is the first step, obviously, yes, we want to get to the right there where we can compare with the other park district, which would include every cost, you know, but.
Right, so this doesn't really help in that regard, because it'll still be in a different fund, I mean, I, okay, because that's what I did hear, was, let's get Greenways, or a portion of it, or, you know, under Parks and Rec, and then, I also had a question regarding all the, so we've had, added a lot of new positions over the years, some positions we approved of, some were just added, and I was told, I think, by city manager Stowe, they were sort of like retrofitted or refurbished positions, so that we didn't have to vote on them, but it would be nice, as we approve new positions that didn't exist before, not like a Greenways position, if we could see some sort of metrics to know if that is, because positions are expensive, and I feel like, you know, when we come around to this time of the year, when we've added, created whole new positions, we should get some sort of feedback as, as to their usefulness, and if it was really worth the expense, thank you, that's all.
Would you go ahead with the second part of the presentation?
Next up, City Engineer Biggs to present on the 2026 CIP program, thank you, Tesh and Clayton.
Just whenever we get to the next slide, just say, next slide, Simon, please.
[laughing].
Sorry, Val.
Mayor Bis, members of the city council, my name is Laura Biggs, I'm the city engineer here tonight to talk about an overview of our 2026 capital improvement program, this is a overview, just in summary, of the different areas of the capital program, in general, our capital program is going to be budgeted at $90.5 million, this is pretty typical of what the previous budgets have been in past years, we do divide it into topic areas for convenience of understanding how we're spending it, so our topic areas are streets, water main, sewer, that is sort of like the street resurfacing and right-of-way projects that you see very commonly, and probably most obvious to the residents, other transportation includes things like traffic signals, bridge projects, sidewalk improvement, our parks, projects, facilities, the water treatment, storage includes the water plants, billing projects, and the stand pipes that we have two of in the distribution system, miscellaneous projects includes our sustainability, as well as some other projects that just don't really fit under the other categories, and we have a new category this year, which is our really significant facilities, these are the large projects that just do not fit within the remainder of our spending, for example, a new police station, which is, would be included in this, might be $90 million by itself, and would wipe out all of the, or skew the entire rest of the capital program, so we are tracking those separately now. Just, I'm not going to go through all 99 capital projects that we have, but I do want to hit a couple highlights in each of the categories, so significant facilities, as I just said, police fire headquarters is one of those, we are currently still under negotiation and doing some additional investigative work on 1801 Maple, that is sort of moved to the putting assets of work team is spearheading that now, and then our service center electrical and HVAC project, we are looking at issuing our RFQ, or request for qualifications, to hire someone by the end of the year to start that project. Streets, water main, sewer, two very large projects we're doing, actually don't have huge amounts budgeted in this year, our Chicago, and by this year, I mean 2026, our Chicago Avenue corridor improvement project, which is bike lanes, pedestrian improvements, traffic signals, street lighting, from Davis to Howard Street, is, because of funding, most likely going to be constructed in 2028, although we may enter into the contract in 2027, but that project is ongoing in design, phase two design in 2026, Church Street corridor improvement, we are currently finalizing the phase one planning, and that will also be moving into design in 2026 to go into construction in 2027, the water main lead service line replacement encompasses many projects in our street water main and sewer category, but in summary, we are proposing to replace 3.2 miles of water main and mitigate 500 lead service lines that exist, we are under a legislative mandate to replace all of our lead service lines, which is over 10,000 lead service lines by 2043, and so, to do that, we need to target that 500 lead service lines per year, so we are in the process of applying for some funding to help us with lead service line replacement, we did that last year, and that helped mitigate our costs, we did receive some from the IPA that mitigated some of our costs for lead service line replacement in 2025, and that funding is what helped offset the rate increase that was proposed for this year, so we will not unfortunately know if we're getting that funding until sometime mid-winter at best, so it's a little bit of roll of the dice, but we continue to apply for funding for lead service. In our other project, our other transportation project category, the Lincoln Street Bridge, which is finished phase one design, planning, and is in phase two design, will continue with construction proposed in 2027, and we are on track for that right now, we are also struggling with some of our traffic signals, we have 11 traffic signals, 11 or 12 traffic signals that are really at the end of their useful life, meaning that if components fail, we no longer are able to replace them and get them back into service, in fact, as we've been replacing traffic signals, we have been scavenging the parts and trying to keep them in stock to keep our other traffic signals going, we have already entered into design, Terra Engineering has been designing three traffic signal replacements on Ridge at Noiz Simpson and Lincoln Street, and then we have an opportunity to work with IDOT on several IDOT signals where we own a portion of the intersection, and IDOT owns a portion of the intersection, so we split the cost, and they are proposing to replace three traffic signals in Evanston that we will partially fund in 2026, so those are at Sheridan and South Boulevard, Central McDaniel, and Central in Lincolnwood. And then sidewalk improvement, we continue to invest significant funds, this year 2025, we actually started replacing paver block sidewalks in downtown Business District, we will continue with that work by doing, we propose to do Chicago Avenue between Church and Davis next year. Park projects, we actually have a significant number of park projects happening, I've just selected a few to talk about, we have the James Park Playground and Pathway and Playground improvements, so James Park is our largest park, and is really a destination that is utilized for a number of different things, we're experiencing some fairly significant ADA issues with pathways around the fieldhouse and on the east side of the park that have not been replaced, and the playground equipment, we've already removed some, and so the other is at the end of its useful life, so this project will address those issues, we did receive partial funding through a $600,000 grant, OSLAD grant, through the Illinois Department of Natural Resources, the construction pretty much has to occur in 2026, we are wrapping up public engagement currently and moving into the design phase, previously, we've talked a lot about legacy parks, parks that have deteriorated to the point of basically needing a full renovation, there were 11 parks identified, four of those are moving into construction next year, and one, we will start design on, which is Raymond Park, and then, public canoe launch, we are working on in conjunction with the Evanston Environment Association, that would create a new, fully ADA accessible, public canoe launch that's next to the current parking lot for Ecology Center, the EEA is fundraising the portion of the canoe launch, that is canoe launch, the parking lot will also need to be reconfigured, and the city of Evanston has committed through past memorandum of understanding to fund the parking lot portion, we split the engineering services evenly for this project, we have applied for a grant which may push back the public canoe launch to start construction later in 2026, but we're still intending, one way or another, to start construction in 2026 for that project. Facilities, we have our Fleetwood Jordane site with the construction of the Foster School, it's sort of, it creates some disconnects with the, our property on the east and north side of Fleetwood Jordane Center, so we have proposed a project that will create a new ADA entrance on the east side and create an outdoor classroom space in that area to sort of maximize the space use, as we are losing some of the green space to the school district for Foster School, we also have an interior renovation project, we received a state DCEO grant in the amount of $500,000, and we're supplementing with some of our cell tower rental fees to create a, some improvements dealing with ADA issues in the building, and some improvements to the auditorium, if anybody has done any AV, or any presentations in the auditorium at Fleetwood Jordane, the AV does leave something to be desired, and so we would upgrade that and make it more friendly for the community to use as well, and some other miscellaneous work within the center. Prieto, we've had some issues with HVAC, we are going to replace the HVAC units as we electrify the building and bring it into compliance with our CARP requirements, so that project is scheduled for next year, and we're already working with some manufacturers to start that project this year, I mean, in terms of the design work, and then, we do have some pretty significant roofing replacements, our normal $600,000 in roofing replacement, as well as replacing the main library roof, and that project with the main library, still need to finalize the cost share, it's currently shown as 50% funded by library bonds, and 50% funded by the city of Evanston and our CIP. Miscellaneous projects, I did not, my mistake, I did not list the participatory budgeting, and it is funded here, but in addition, staff is proposing to do a healthy building compliance assessment for city facilities, which would set us up to be able to electrify the remaining facilities that we have not yet addressed, and figure out how to bring them fully into compliance with the proposed, with the existing healthy building ordinance that was approved this year, so it would not actually create, finish the design on any of those buildings, but it would tell us what is involved, so that we can further budget and group the projects, currently, we've been sort of doing one-offs on that, and if we're going to meet our deadline of full CARP compliance, full removal of natural gas by 2035, we really aren't on pace to do that, this study will help us figure out how to do that, as well as complying with the healthy building ordinance. Too fast, sorry. Water plant projects, we are still continuing with our 4160 volt electrical project, this is a project that replaces all of the low and medium voltage equipment, electrical equipment at the water plant, as well as replaces the backup power generation, it does include some facility build-out as well to make space to house all the new equipment, and provide some additional space as well for other functions at the water plant, we are working towards a significant security improvement, which is to replace the fencing and gates at the water plant and expand the fencing, most likely, this was recommended by our risk and resilience, our risk assessment that we had done as a compliance with the American Water Infrastructure Act requirements for security at water utilities, and then we are continuing with the phase two retail water meter replacement that was started in 2025, that continues to change out retail water meters, and by retail, I mean, in people's homes, and in commercial businesses that are at the end of their useful life and need to be updated. At this point, I'd just like to summarize, like, where we are on some of the challenges that we've discussed in previous years, and the progress that we've made, and then talk about some new challenges that we've identified as we put together the 2026 budget, so one of those things was funding lead service line and increasing our water main replacement, as I said, we are actually making pretty significant process, we had proposed a series of rate increases over five to 10 years in order to be able to fund this, we do think, because we received a lot of grant funding this year, that we did not anticipate that we'll be able to bypass this year's rate increase, and then just proceed with rate increases in 2027, that level of that rate increase will be identified as we get closer to 2027, and we look at what our actual costs are into the water fund. We've talked about legacy parks, we identified the 11 parks, two of them have been fully completed, four moving into. Two of them have been fully completed, four moving into construction in 2026, and then we will start Raymond in 2027. That actually covers the most expensive and worst situations in the legacy parks. And we actually, as we wrap up the strategic plan, end of this year, early next year, we will probably do a little bit of a revamp on how we are looking at moving forward with legacy parks. We've talked also about the need to address six facilities that had multiple building system failures. We've actually, the new animal shelter is in operation. The Ecology Center is having a ribbon cutting on a pretty substantial renovation on October 29th. I hope to see everybody there at 3:00 PM. And then we have completed master plans for the Service Center and Noiz Cultural Arts Center. We've done the first project in the Service Center one, which was the fuel lidlun replacement, is complete. We're starting the second project, which is much bigger, but we're issuing the RFP for that project coming up this year. And then Noiz Cultural Arts Center, we have put a little bit of a delay on starting the master plan as we deal with some of our other facilities' needs, but the project, the facility is being considered as part of the Putting Assets to Work study that the city is performing separately. And then the remaining two facilities, we did relocate our City Hall facility to 909 Davis this year from 2100 Ridge, and the city council, the previous city council approved a resolution to look at not moving back to or reutilizing 2100 Ridge for a city purpose. The future of that property is currently being investigated as part of the Putting Assets to Work study. And then Police Fire Headquarters, we're sort of looking at 1801 Maple or reusing the existing property, but that is being addressed as well or is currently being investigated. So we've made some pretty significant progress on legacy facilities. Special Assessment Alley Funding, we talked about. This is one where we haven't made as much progress. Currently, alleys are primarily improved through a 50/50 cost share, in which people request a petition to get their alley improved. We tell them the cost, they have to get signatures from a majority of the property owners. Currently, there are 88 people on the waitlist for getting a petition. We only issue five to 10 petitions a year, out of which we get two to three petitions. That is all that our current funding level in the capital program really can pay for the city's share of all of those. It's not the best customer or service situation, and unfortunately, we were improving one to two alleys a year through community development block grant funds. Through changes in the rules for CDBG, it is not really conducive to doing that anymore. It's a lot more effort to get that done and approved by HUD. So we are still sort of struggling with this. This past year, we did transfer a million dollars of general fund use, and that did allow us to get an additional alley that was really significant done, but we still haven't figured out a long-term funding solution for this. Challenge five, the sidewalk improvement needs in business districts. Just from the number of ADA complaints and challenges that have been identified through paver block sidewalks, we are now working towards removing all of the paver block sidewalks. It's fairly expensive, so we're doing it a little bit at a time still, but it's faster rate than we were doing it, so that's something that we're trying to get through them in five years. And then Fountain Square, we talked about this past year, how to proceed with that. The city council did recommend that, the previous city council recommended that. We go forward with replacing the existing fountain. We have currently advertised a request for proposal to get a design-build contract to do that. We're anticipating the construction would start fall next year. As far as new things that we've been looking at this year that have sort of been challenges we've been working through the 2026 capital program, the number one is still probably parks infrastructure funding. So while we have been working through the legacy project, park projects, we don't want the next generation of legacy projects to form. So we have started funding annual amounts that we call a group of projects that are investment and modernization, where we really target very specific amenity improvements that are needed, things like improving courts, pathways, playground equipment replacement. There are seven of these line items, and we have increased the funding to 3.1 million this year in 2026. But really, this is still not adequate to keep pace with the failures that we're seeing of individual amenities in parks. Just in the number of playground pieces of equipment that we had to remove in 2025 for safety reasons, we would need $4 million just to replace those pieces of playground equipment. We spiked from 600,000 or approximately a million last year in playground equipment replacement to 1.5 million this year, which may address three of those locations. But obviously, we're not really meeting the need yet with our current funding levels for debt and with other sources of funding for playgrounds and park improvements. We are not really on track to be able to ever cover those, so there is just a misalignment between funding available and the number of amenities that need to be improved. So this is a topic for discussion that we will work with the Parks and Rec Board and the Finance and Budget Committee in the coming year. Another challenge that we are discovering is sidewalk improvement programs. So in 2022, we replaced the old 50/50 sidewalk replacement program with a new sidewalk improvement program that was fully funded by the city, and we made an estimate that it would take us approximately 15 years to get through replacing the 40-year backlog of sidewalk that was deteriorated. But since then, two things have happened. One, we've had excessive construction inflation, which we've talked about before, and the federal government adopted new standards for sidewalk that ADA compliance, that really increases the amount of sidewalk we have to replace per block. So we are not nearly on target now for 15 years to get through the entire city. Currently, it is more like 30 years, and so we are again working towards it, but it is just going to take longer than we anticipated to get through all the deteriorated sidewalk. And then our third challenge we've talked about is geo-debt funding. So for decades, not number four decades, but for many decades, the city has basically issued 10 to 12 million dollars in geo-bond funds per year to help support capital improvement. And then each year, as we've complete a bond issue and we roll off 10 to 12 million dollars worth of debt, we enter into 10 to 12 million dollars of new debt. The challenge with this is what happened 20 years ago, and you could pay for with 10 to 12 million dollars of debt, with inflation in construction is now 20 million dollars worth of projects. And so staff has currently proposed switching to 20 million dollars of debt issued each year. We do not complete every project we propose to each year, so we are actually budgeting 22 to 24 million dollars each year to get to 20 million dollars debt issuance a year. This is not something that has been fully settled, although our current CIP reflects that. I think that's a conversation that can be had, both maybe, maybe not as part of this budget process, but as we move forward with the Finance and Budget Committee. This year, as we publish the CIP, that's the end of the current challenges I was going to discuss, but as we publish the current CIP, based on feedback we've received from council members, we are showing one-year detailed, as we always have, and two to five years summarized by funding source, and that is printed in the packet that you have. And then there's also a column for year six to 10, which we have not totally built out yet because this is the first year we're doing it, but we're starting to show projects that we know have to be done in that five to 10-year period that we need to make sure that we're budgeting for in the future. So we'll continue to build that out in future years so that becomes more and more representative of our actual expenses in year six to 10. We also, in the packet, divided the 2026 CIP into two lists for information. One that shows projects that are just ongoing, that there's always been, already been some financial investment or public engagement in, versus a list of projects that are brand-new in 2026. Historically, the city council has examined new projects most more closely, not wanting to disrupt projects that have already started when they do cost-cutting or budgeting. So we provided a separate list to show which are the new projects for consideration. Those projects are currently shown as budgeted in the budget that's presented, but they would be good candidates if someone wanted to cut projects out of the CIP. Having said that, any projects fair game, and we're totally willing to answer questions or discuss the value of any particular project as budgeted. Part of the, interesting part of the CIP preparation is trying to match it to funding sources. So we are showing that significant facilities funding is a separate line item here, and in the budgets that you look at, when you see the project bond funds, which are the general obligation debt, you see that we've budgeted 24.7 million currently. We'll also roll over some of the 2025 general obligation bond. There's a little bit of a challenge with CIP that when we put the budget together by August, we're not 100% sure what is going to be committed in a contract by December 31st, and so some of that is shown as rollover, which means that it'll be committed sometime between August and January, February of next year. And then you can see we also have water fund, sewer fund, those are enterprise funds where we are able to use that funding only to pay for assets that are related to those funds. Parking fund is similarly an enter-fund thing. Motor fuel tax, which is actually, has to be used for projects related to the street and right-of-way, and it is closely regulated by IDOT, and they have to review the things that we spend it on. So while it's ours to choose, it's a pretty limited list of where we can choose to spend it. And then tax increment financing, we do utilize TIF funds quite a bit in the capital program. They are geographically limited, though. We can only spend them on things that are geographically located within TIF boundaries. We have a pretty good track record in Evanston where we form a TIF for 23 years, and initially, the first half of it is really heavily focused on economic development. And then as we build up a balance, then we go into some pretty significant infrastructure projects. And the current CIP is no different. It shows those things. And then there's other funding sources as well. Many of those are really specifically limited, things like community development block grant, which we propose to spend on sidewalks this year, as well as special assessment funds for alley, and some things that are private donations, where we're getting a fairly significant boost in 2026 from the Evanston Environment Association fundraising for the public canoe And then separately, it's hard, we do show just significant facilities and what we would spend in 2026, but those are very large projects, and it's not really honest to not explain that as you start on these projects, you're committing to something that is actually outside, way outside of our normal funding levels. And so those are the projects that are currently expected to move forward in the next few years. The Service Center Electrical HVAC Project, the new facility for Police Fire Headquarters, and the Noiz Electrical and HVAC Modernization Projects. Currently, we have reviewed the CIP with Parks and Recreation Board, Finance and Budget, the Environment Board. We're going to be going to the ADA Advisory Committee to talk about how we comply with ADA, and then we will be continuing our conversations here with city council between October and November. The CIP has been traditionally adopted at the same time as part of the 2026 budget. With that, I'm happy to answer any questions.
Questions for Laura.
Councilmember Isles, followed by Hara Kari Sanusma.
Okay. I didn't speak after the last presentation, but thank you to staff. We have really got some significant challenges that we're faced with. We've got pension obligations. We want to catch up and be fully funded by 2040. We've got a lot of deferred maintenance. We've got some critical capital projects in the pipeline. If I'm going to use Councilmember Harris's grocery analogy, there's a few things that you've talked about that I'd like to put back up on the shelf. And the first one is the Fountain Square replacement. I think we should reexamine whether, where this falls and how important it is. I'm like, who does the fountain serve? The square is important, but the water feature, I don't think is, is critical. When we're faced with all of these budget challenges, there's going to be some things that we need to do without, and I think this is one that we can do without. We live in a climate that it's going to be difficult to maintain it. I'm nervous if we fix it, it's going to be broken again in five years. I don't hear anybody clamoring for the water feature to return to the extent that, like, do you have any idea how much it would cost to fix it, like what the range would be?
We budgeted somewhere between, I'm going to say it's around 2.4 million, of which we received a settlement from the contractor, approximately $800,000.
So that's a significant amount of money to spend on something that I think we could live without. I think we could just change the name of it to Evanston Square instead of Fountain Square. Another thing I think we need to take a really close look at, I heard you say we can't keep up with the pace of failures in our parks. We've got a misalignment of funding. We have amenities that we, we can't keep up the maintenance of. We live in a community that has more playgrounds than a community our size normally has, and less parkland than a community our size normally has. So I think we're going to have to, you know, take a good look at this and revamp how we think about it. I think with census data, we can make some predictions and return some of those areas that are, that are now quite expensive to maintain playgrounds to parkland, and that's something that we could consider that could help keep us within our means. Thank you.
Thank you.
Councilmember Hara Kari, followed by Nusma.
I was pleased to see that Main Street from Asbury to Hartree was on the list for an assessment to begin. We, I get a lot of concern from folks that live in that corridor that, you know, between Washington and Crown, it's just a very dangerous place for people across the road, and I think that's, I'm pleased that that's in the beginning stages, hopefully for next year. A couple other kind of questions. So alleys has become something I talk to a lot of residents about, and I know staff was really good to apply for an MWRD sustainability Grant for permeable alley paving. Do you know when we'll hear back from that?
We did not receive that.
We did not receive that, okay. That's unfortunate, so I guess that'll continue to be a challenge, so to speak. Again, pedestrian safety is a big, big deal. I, you know, former councilmember Rainey was here and brought up 50/50 sidewalk program. While I really like the program we have that we're paying for it, I wonder if maybe we could consider using a 50/50 program to supplement what we already do, because there are likely some folks that can pay for sidewalk repairs that, you know, I like the way that we're prioritizing school routes and medical facilities, senior living facilities. I think that's the right way, but if there's a way to kind of, you know, further our efforts, I think that'd be something that maybe, I don't know how complicated that would get with adding potentially more and doing the 50/50 program just to supplement, but that'd be, I don't know if you have any thoughts on that.
We currently do allow people to participate if they want to pay 100% of the sidewalk cost and then, but they don't have to do all the effort of finding a contractor and getting right of way permits and et cetera. We do it as part of our contract. If we do implement a 50/50, I imagine we'd see a lot more of that. I mean, we'd get people who want to participate at 100%, actually a surprising number. But if we expand it to 50/50, it would really reduce what are, what we were able to self-fund 100% because of the number of requests we would get.
Maybe at a future date, I'd be curious to see how many 100% fund, what the numbers are, because that'd be interesting to see. And then I like to, I like that you folks have the building assessment project in there. I think as we're doing, you know, efforts to do building electrification, modernization, and meet our CARP goals, I think it'd be really great for us to be able to tell the story of, hey, this is, you know, the Prieto Center. We used to use X amount of kilowatt hours a month. Now that we've changed, you know, our, you know, HVAC, this is what we use in comparison. I think that's something that'd be really helpful for residents and also help kind of tell the narrative about how we're being smart about making our building upgrades. So, yeah, I think that'd be a great, great outcome from that.
First of all, would the clerk please add Councilmember Davis to the roll? Councilmember Nusma, followed by Rogers and Davis.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Five points. Point number one, I will echo what Councilmember Herakatis just said about the Main Street project from Hartree to Asbury. I too have received a lot of constituent feedback on that, so I'm glad that's on the list. Hopefully it will stay there. Point number two, with regards to parks, you had called out parks funding as 2026 challenge number one. And in fact, that has been a challenge in previous years as well and will probably continue to be a challenge moving forward. So I just, I want to make, and we've made progress on this in my four and a half years on the council. I think there is progress yet to be achieved. And, you know, I look forward to working with the Parks and Rec Board to help us, you know, identify maybe alternative paradigms for how do we fund parks maintenance and parks improvements. One of those possibilities, Councilmember Rogers mentioned recently, was a public-private partnership. We saw a park in Councilmember, Elks Park in Councilmember Rogers Ward, part of the Ridgeville District, that through a public-private partnership was able to get a new playground with zero taxpayer dollars. Correct me if I'm wrong.
I think there were some conditions involved and I don't know all of those, but I know that Director Thompson has talked with that group as well. And so she would be better knowledgeable probably on that.
So that's one example of a new strategy we might consider to meet that challenge. Point number three, the HBO compliance study, I'm glad we're thinking about that. I'm curious how this study, you know, which we're penciling in $500,000 for, how does that work with our 2022 zero emissions strategy? I thought with that 2022 plan, we've already started to think about that. How much further down the road does this HBO compliance study take us?
The zero emissions study was a really pretty decent first attempt at looking at things like the fleet conversion, as well as talking about some of our costs to convert our facilities. I think one of the challenges that we've experienced is their cost estimates are not, they're very optimistic. I'll just leave it at that. And then with the implement of the healthy building ordinance, it is fairly similar to the CARP goals, but it is a little different. And that's the legal requirement that now the city of Evanston is bound to comply with, regardless of our feelings about the Climate Action Resilience Plan. And so while meeting it will meet a lot of our goals for CARP as well, I think that one of the things we heard during the passage of the healthy building ordinance was some concern expressed by several council members in public and private about, well, what does this mean for our city facilities? So this is sort of our answer. It helps us identify what does it mean for our city facilities? And then we've talked internally a lot about how do we group projects to start getting lots of facilities compliant at the same time? And we're fairly reactive addressing things like the situation with Prieto where the HVAC units, which we knew when we acquired it, are just not in good condition and it's not going to wait very long for us to deal with. And there's no point with our city goals in replacing them with something that's not CARP compliant. So all of a sudden, Prieto becomes really important to make a move on it. And it's exciting because we're, we want to start converting our community centers and our rec centers where the public is invited into these centers and can actually see these systems that they do work, like the ecology center. But we want to get away from just doing one-off projects because we'll never meet all the goals if we stick to just one-offs. By doing this HBO compliance, we will be able to group facilities that have similar situations and come up with more standard ways of addressing things. And I think that's the part that's most exciting, is that should help us really be more efficient in how we do things.
Great. And hopefully the study will include looking very seriously at rooftop solar. I know we've got a project at Robert Crown just now getting underway, which it's taken us a long time to get to that starting line. Hopefully that can be the first of many, the new rooftop going on Prieto, be perfect time for rooftop solar there, there, which is something we can do at no capital expense to the city and some operational savings through a power purchase agreement. So I think there's some good opportunities there.
Yeah. Power purchase agreements we're discovering are not great for everything. Generally, they work better for large projects and large roofs than they do for small projects and small roofs. So the animal shelter is one where we're, most likely, we just need to acquire solar panels and install them because it's never going to be favorable to get into a PPA. Nevertheless, we're excited to see the one at Crown actually going in and is currently physically onsite under construction. So that's really cool. And then to, we've learned a lot already about PPAs and then to see how it works in actual operation.
Okay. Point number four of five, speaking to Councilmember Isles' suggestion that we remove, or that we put the Fountain Square fountain back on the shelf. I have heard as one of the council members representing the south half of Fountain Square, you know, some concern, some desire for that, you know, hey, when's the fountain going to come back? So I'm not opposed to cost cutting measures. I think we need to kind of evaluate every, every idea. If there's a way to take some costs out of that, I would certainly be in favor of that. I think it's important to have some kind of a fountain. If there's a way we can do it better, that's something we can, we can talk about. My take is the fourth word, council member, anyway. And then number five, to respond to Councilmember Herakatis, and this 50/50 sidewalk program, I too really like our current program, which doesn't require residents to pay anything. I think the old way of doing it, which was just 50/50, was super duper unfair to lower-income residents and really allowed inequitable infrastructure throughout town. If there is a way we can allow folks who do have the means to pay some more, let's look at that. But I think looking at the numbers of folks who are opting into the, you know, 0-100 program where they're paying the city rate, which is less than they would pay themselves if they were contracting it independently, that's pretty significant savings. And I think that might be, I'd be interested in looking at some numbers there. But sidewalks are, are infrastructure that the whole city uses or that belong to the, that belong to everybody. I walk down somebody else's sidewalk probably more than I walk down the sidewalk in front of my own house. And if all I'm doing is paying for what's in my own house, it's not really paying for what I'm actually using. So, yeah, I do like the equity aspect of our current funding strategy.
We will provide the information on the number of people participating at the 100% cost level.
Thank you. That's all for now.
Councilmember Rogers, followed by Davis and Kelly.
Thank you. I'll pick up on the 50/50 sidewalk program because that's something I hear about a lot in our ward. I will push back somewhat on the equity aspect of it in saying that some people's sidewalks will never get repaired because they aren't on a major route, they aren't on a path to a school, et cetera, et cetera. And it's hard for them to pay 100%. I don't know if there's a way that, that we could look at a subcontracted program or something like that, if we don't have the ability to take that on ourselves. But it's something that I think is very important and is one of those things that the city should be doing. We kind of get lost sometimes in Evanston by doing things that are nice tos, that we'd like to do. But this is one of those things I think that we really are responsible for. And when the sidewalks become impassable even for a short period of time, we replaced part of ours because the trees had uprooted them. And we had large puddles of water that froze every winter and made a giant ice skating rink for about 15, 20 feet, which created problems for anybody passing through there. So I think we really do need to look at, is there some way that we can figure out how to make this work? If we don't have the capability, maybe subcontracting it or figuring out some other way to bring it into compliance. Motor fuel tax. We've got a lot of money sitting in motor fuel tax and it seems like one of those that's really hard to spend.
We are, we are going to be spending it down. So one thing that you can do with motor fuel tax is we can use it for matching funds for some of our bigger projects. So this year, we're actually proposing to spend the traffic signal repairs out of motor fuel tax. In 2025, we spent our matching funds for the federally funded Green Bay Road project was for motor fuel tax. So that was about 2.2 million, the traffic signals is about 2.2 million. And in '27, we have some, in '28, we have some pretty significant street improvement, streetscape improvement projects with Chicago Avenue and Church Street. So.
So that is something we can spend the money, because I'm just, I'm concerned about us growing a fund and not really being able to spend it too many places.
We have not done that because some of the accounting can get challenging with what's restricted, because I, those projects, IDOT actually holds a construction contract and they can take many years to build the, build the final invoice to us. But, I mean, we have great accountants. We have a fantastic budget team. It's more complex, but this is how we've decided that this way we can take what was traditionally geo bond debt funds and offset them for at least a few years with motor fuel tax and reduce our bond issue accordingly.
As long as we have plans for it. That's all, that's all I'm concerned about, is that we don't just grow a fund. And then finally, the HBO compliance study, is this something, how much is this in our budget?
It's currently shown as $500,000.
Okay. So is this something that would have been covered off on our $10 million grant that we are still waiting to hear on?
Kara was here just a minute ago. I would have to defer to her.
Well, I don't need an answer exactly this second because this is obviously an ongoing conversation. So I'd just be interested in knowing if this is something that was covered off on by that and if we, what the status is of that type of money? Because I don't want us to start spending a bunch of money if we're going to be getting money in that's earmarked for that and if we know anything about that.
Good evening.
Did you hear everything? I know you were out of the room for part of it, so.
Yes.
Okay.
Kara Pratt, Chief Sustainability and Resilience Officer. The status of that grant is still unknown. It has not been formally canceled, but we still have not heard back from the DOE that we have permission to spend any funding. And so there was budget in the grant for audits for equity prioritized buildings. So it would be up to the Healthy Buildings Accountability Board if they would deem municipal buildings equity priority buildings.
As I said, I just don't want us to start spending money if we're going to have money coming in potentially, you know, because that limits then what we can do with that potential $10 million if that was targeted out for certain purposes. All right. Thank you. That's all, Mr. Mayor.
Councilmember Davis, followed by Kelly.
I just wanted to say that I really appreciated Councilmember Isles' thoughts and I think that I'm about on the same page where he was coming out with basically all of those aspects. One of the things that I have mentioned to you, do we call you Director Bakes in this situation or? Okay, just Laura.
Bureau chief, I guess.
Bureau chief, bureau chief. And maybe the other council members don't know, but I would like us to have a developed multi-year plan where we are aware of the maintenance of our buildings and our anticipation for when we'll need major repairs. And I like what we do with the parks where we do an inspection every year to kind of get an idea of the progress. And then also, we have like a list of all the parks from basically worst condition to best condition so that we know how we're tracking through. And I just don't want any other major surprises as we have like, you know, maybe it wasn't a surprise, but I'd like it to not creep up on us as it did with the noise center. And this kind of segues into my next one in that I would like us to be planning for our maintenance. So, you know, when I have to replace the roof in our house, we know we're going to have to do that in 10 years and we're kind of saving up for that because that's our big expense. Along the same lines, these are general questions. So GO bonds, what is, what interest rate are we offering for GO bonds?
We'll defer that to our finance team.
Okay.
Interest rates for GO bonds?
The interest rate for GO bond is still around 4% when we got the estimate last year. Obviously, we then saw the one rate cut, you know, recently. And there's one more rate cut, I think, later this month when the feds meet. So hopefully, right now, I'm targeting like early spring.
Okay.
Till then, I think we have enough cash to carry on our business. Hopefully, the Cook County issues the property tax bill in next month. So that, that's the trend. But yeah, the rate is a little high, so we don't want to issue the bonds. In particular, when we issue the bonds, which cannot be called for at least 10 years. So yeah, we will wait for a couple of rate cuts, yeah.
Okay. And so is it typical, like, is our GO bond utilization, like the amount that we're issuing, is it about on par with other communities?
Yeah.
Okay.
I mean, we have even kind of better, you know, we are rating with S&amp;P's AA, which is only two notches down from the highest AAA.
No, 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 I don't mean our interest rate. What I mean is like the amount, like, I don't, I imagine we're probably, I don't actually know the exact number, but if we're giving out $20 million worth of bonds, is that about on par with how much other cities are giving out?
Right. And even, I mean, I just read, like even in this high environment, the couple of cities, I think Aurora was one there where they issued the, like almost $100 million bonds for some big projects, you know?
Okay.
But yes, if you compare on a regular CIP plan and with the cost and inflation in the last five years, yes, definitely 20 million.
Okay. Because of what I'm kind of wondering is if we are over-reliant on GO bonds as opposed to proactively saving for our expenses?
I mean, one thing is, you can't just compare in terms of size. Like suppose Schaumburg is the, we have one, LG, and some of those cities are relatively kind of, you know, not as old as, so we have more infrastructure needs. You know, the parks or some of the infrastructure is 50 years old, 100 years old. Whereas in some of the cities, which are only totally 50 years old, so they have a lot less infrastructure.
And Councilmember Davis, I don't think you were on the Finance and Budget Committee yet, but earlier this year in February, we did a series of benchmarking charts with our peers so we could show how we stack up against those communities. And so we can bring that back in the form of a budget memo so you can see this data that we shared, so you can see how we stack up against everybody else.
Could you email that to me?
Sure, sure.
Okay. Thank you. Those are all of my questions. Thank you.
Councilmember Kelly.
Thank you. So just to dovetail on the question about the debt, again, I would ask that we do give a complete accounting of all the debt for the residents so that we know not just GO bonds that are tax-supported, but also the GO bonds that go into our enterprise funds. This is all has to be paid back in one form or another, whether it's on the levy or if it's in fees for water. So I do ask that we have a total amount, including our low interest debt as well, as well as our debt liability, because we do pay interest on our pensions. So I think the residents. So I think the residents really need to, and our councilmembers need to have a full accounting of really what's sitting on our shoulders in terms of debt. And I, so that would be great to get that this year. Thank you. And regarding Fountain Square, I did want to say, I also, as a councilmember for the downtown ward, I do hear about it all the time, whenever we can get our fountain back. When I've surveyed residents, they have, they have asked to have the same, I don't know what you call that, that kind of fountain, the zero.
Yeah, it was a zero depth with fountain jets, so it sort of operated as a splash pad as well as a fountain.
So that was the preference. I mean, I could go either way, but that's what I've been hearing. And I know when I met with our attorneys that were working on the case and our attorney from here as well, they, they together decided it would be, I mean, I think, everyone needs to remember, it was about a $7 million that taxpayers paid dearly for that fountain, $7 million. And I think they settled that, that it would cost about 1.2 million to repair. And I know it's more than that, I'm not suggesting that that's it. But, but I think that we got 800,000 back towards that. We really owe it to our residents to, again, you know, save costs where we can, but to reinstall that, that fountain. Again, they paid dearly for that. And I'm also looking forward, I'm glad to hear we'll start getting a 10-year projection on upgrades, and that would be really, really wonderful to hear, so we don't have to, you know, so we'll know what's down, coming down the pike, and we can plan accordingly. And in terms of sidewalks, I agree with Councilmember Rogers. I think this is really important that we're tending to those. So I would ask that we look at our staffing to see if, because this is something that's ongoing throughout the year, if it would help to increase staffing so that we can appropriately tend to our sidewalks. And I think that's it for now. Oh, and I, yeah, I think that's it. Thank you.
Thank you very much. It's a tremendous amount of work went into this so far, and lots of work lies ahead for the whole team, including those of us up here. We really appreciate it and look forward to a collaborative process to get to a good place.
Thank you very much.
The next item on the agenda is communications from the city clerk.
I have no communications today. Thank you.
The next item on the agenda is public comment. This evening, there just, just a hair under 15 people, so everyone gets the full three minutes. We begin, as always, with those who signed up in person to speak in person, beginning with Martha Rosenberg, who'll be followed by Sam Gaiman, and then Mary Rosinsky.
Hi, everyone. My name is Martha Rosenberg. I was Director of Marketing for EVMARK for 10 years, and I was staff cartoonist of Evanston Roundtable for 20 years. So many people know me or have laughed in my cartoons. And I'd like to thank council for all, all the amenities that you're dealing with now and the, and the funding and budget. I think it's just great what you're doing, handling it. And so anyway, I, I live at 2605 Prairie, which is kind of the ground zero for the central street repairs. I'm a reporter and I work out of the apartment. And for 10 months, I've been almost unable to work because of this construction. Specifically, three things. One is, of course, the noise. Last summer, we had water pipes replaced. This summer, for seven months, it's been the, the Green Bay, right, Central. And first, the noise, not, not only prevents me from doing radio, television, and podcasts, it even prevents me from talking on the phone there. It's incredibly noisy. And, and so it's, I've taken a lot of wage loss, and I would like the city to compensate me. I've lost a lot of money. But the second issue with the construction is the fumes. They idled their truck under my window, and for hours, I've had to call the police a lot. And of course, I have to vacate or run the air conditioner, which is expensive. And so that's also cost in terms of money. And then the third thing is they chopped off my 20-year-old, 20-foot-tall tree, which means that the apartment is now 95 degrees because there's no, no shade, consequently causing me to, again, have to run the air conditioner. I've tried to get legal aid for this. I don't have any money for a lawyer, but I've lost a lot of money. So thank you for listening to this, and I would appreciate any help to compensate for my lost wages and the construction that's made me unable to work. Thank you.
Thank you very much. The next speaker is Sam Gaiman, who'll be followed by Mary Rosinsky, and then Niles Coalition.
Hi there. Thanks very much for the opportunity to speak tonight. My name's Sam Gaiman. I live at 807 Davis Street in the First Ward. It's kind of an impulse decision for me to come tonight. I'm able to do that because I have the luxury of living one block away from here, which is an incredible blessing. I'm very fortunate to be able to be in walking distance. And I'm glad I did come tonight because I learned a lot about the, the budget and how things are going to be paid for, you know, moving forward. And I wish that more people would come to these kinds of meetings. I see a lot more involvement when things like 605 Davis are on the agenda, and people are concerned about things that are going to be built one block away from them, but aren't concerned about the long-term consequences of budgetary decisions. The main reason why I did come tonight was in regards to some of my views on, on housing policy, but also the forward finances of the community, as well as some of the actions of this council. What I first wanted to say was, you know, we, we went over a lot of things in the budget tonight. I heard $14 million deficit, which staff has worked really hard to offset, and I commend them for that. I heard additional efforts will be needed, not sustainable. Councilmember Harris, I think you mentioned stop, start, pause. I thought that was a great way to put it. There's something on the agenda two weeks from now, which, in my opinion, is, is one of these potential starts. I think there's a way to get more revenue for the city, as well as address some of the other crises which we're facing, crises that young people like me are feeling in particular, which is the lack of housing. One thing I haven't mentioned about myself at previous meetings that I've come to is that I'm a student at Kellogg at Northwestern. I haven't said that because if you haven't noticed, it is open season on Northwestern students in this room. When residents come in here, they like to complain about us for some reason. There was a resident in particular two weeks ago who said that our buildings, quote, "reek of pot smoke and cigarettes", end quote, which I thought was kind of mean, but also kind of funny because nobody else thinks we're that cool. But the reality is, we need more housing, and everybody needs more housing. And I don't just want to be here for Kellogg, I want to be here longer term. I've got a job lined up downtown in Chicago, my fiance and I love living here. But the reality is that we are not going to be able to afford to stay if we don't build more housing. And so what I'm asking tonight is, as we look forward two weeks, that we think about being ready for that vote on 605 Davis. I think it's important to be predictable and timely in the decision-making, both for the purposes of recognizing that time is quite literally money. For every month that we delay this vote on the building, we miss a month of property taxes. Within five years, this will be generating $600,000 a year in property tax, and that's $50,000 a month. So if we keep delaying it every single month, it's $50,000 less. And the other issue is, if we keep delaying, if we keep sending it back to other committees, that sends a bad signal to future developers. And we want to be sure that we have a reputation in Evanston of being pro-housing and encouraging more developers to come here. And so I think we need to move quickly and forcefully, and I would support housing, and I ask that you do the same. Thank you very much.
Thank you very much. The next speaker is Mary Rosinsky, who'll be followed by Niles Coalition, and then Rue Young.
I think that was a long meeting, but it was good. It's a good beginning to the budget season, which is one of the reasons I was here, I was coming, was that, you know, I, I hope that when this budget goes before Budget and Finance, that the people you've appointed, Daniel Bis, will have the expertise. I was concerned for all our boards and commissions that there be some rubric of what are the qualifications we are looking for, for our boards and commissions. And one of the problems, and it hasn't just been in this administration, but previously, is that people put in their names and applications and qualifications. Those applications are supposed to be kept on file for three years. Yet we have vacancies in committee for months after months after months. And then when those applications are FOIA'd, they aren't there to be found. And I don't think this is a way to run a city because you guys can't do anything. Your meetings, you guys do so much, and you work so hard. But let your experts on your boards and commissions who are zeroing in on this get the information. Let them be the people that are committed to looking at this as a full-time commitment to you in their little section of the world, and then you can count on them and they can count on you. That was the one thing. And the other thing, so I'd love to see those qualifications published. I'd love to see people, I know many people have never even heard whether or not you saw their application or what happened to them. They just were treated like garbage. Second of all, I'm looking forward to getting all the release of the executive minutes on the, on the website. They're not published yet. I know Stephanie, I think you're going to work on that. But the last ones that are on the website are from 2023, which is pretty unacceptable. And then the, the other thing is regarding the 605 Davis, I do want affordable housing. I'm in the housing industry. But that building is going to cost residents big time. We are going to be subsidizing for 30 years luxury apartments. People I know, myself included, I have a two-unit building, I live in one, I pay the other. Each unit costs $7,500 a year to, to do it. That building won't be paying anything but $50 a year per unit for the first three years. Then it goes up to $400 a year for 500 for the next six, three years. And then it kind of gradually gets up there. And every one of those 400 units in, in 605 Davis will be subsidized by all the other people in this city. And we're going to get 43 units. I think we should have do 10% affordable housing, get the full tax. If they don't want to do the building, then don't, then someone else will. We know there was another buyer for that project, for that lot. We should, we need our full taxes, whether or not it's 2 million or 2.7, which is that, that 605 should be paying per year. We need the city staff, when they're presenting projects, to show the pros and the cons on it. And I really would love some financial transparency on this. Thank you so much.
Thank you very much. The next speaker is Niles Coalition, who'll be followed by Rue Young, and then Beth Lang.
Hello, I'm a researcher with Niles Coalition. We've been investigating state violence, including automatic license plate reader cameras, or ALPRs. Evanston is at the heart of a national debacle as communities realize the insidious harm of these weapons. Our police were caught breaking multiple laws using ALPRs illegally. State and local laws supposedly restrict ALPR data sharing, but Evanston Police knowingly violated those laws for years. Here's an example of an audit log for searches by outside agencies. How long do you think it covers? A month? A week? That's 33 minutes. That's 33 minutes of continuous stream of cops, including feds, stalking us. What consequences will the police face for their crimes? What restitution will be provided to the victims whose location data was shared without their consent or knowledge? After all this, the police want another ALPR system and more cops to use that system. ALPR surveillance didn't stop crime, it created it. Evanston is unwelcoming when police lock out elderly black residents in the middle of the night to gentrify the Fifth Ward. Evanston is unwelcoming when Palestinians are surveilled and erased during a US-backed genocide. Evanston is unwelcoming when police use surveillance weapons against our own people. Evanston is unwelcoming because it's a settler colonial project built on stolen land, land back. So who exactly is Evanston supposed to be welcoming? Please visit unwelcomingevanston.com. Thanks.
Thank you very much. The next speaker is Rue Young, who'll be followed by Beth Lang, and then Jaclyn Mendoza.
Hi. Good evening. My name is Rue Young. I'm here to talk about the open ice areas that we need to eliminate. I have many, many young people who cannot go to parks. You were talking, Mr. Isles, about how many parks there are. Many students and their parents can't go to parks anymore. We need to make the community centers, and we need to make the parks ice-free zones so that all of Evanston feels welcome, as our compatriot just said. And so that everyone has a place to play and feel safe. Thank you.
The next speaker is Beth Lang, who'll be followed by Jaclyn Mendoza, and then Kate Jagard Tayo.
Good evening, everyone. I'm Beth Lang. I'm a resident of the First Ward. And I'm here to speak in support of the resolution you'll be voting on tonight, Resolution 93-R-25, with the title prohibiting the use of city, Evanston, prohibiting the use of city of Evanston property for federal civil immigration enforcement operations and providing direction on implementation of the Welcoming City Ordinance. We're all seeing federal immigration enforcement agents and their use of terrifying tactics to grab and abduct people, as happened in Evanston this weekend. To uphold the city's Welcoming City Ordinance, I support the staff's recommendation included in this resolution. Not only should city property not be used for staging, but sharing resources to private owners on how to prevent their properties from being similarly used is important. As, I also have the sign, this is the hotline number for people to call. I carry a Know Your Rights card in my wallet, and I also carry this phone number on my phone. I'm very grateful that I live in a welcoming city, but it's taking all of us in this moment to do everything we can to protect members of our community. And I hope that the council will not only pass this, but all of you will be joining all of us who are spending a lot of time in all the neighborhoods and visiting businesses to, to protect our community members. Thank you.
Thank you very much. The next speaker is Jaclyn Mendoza, who'll be followed by Kate Jagard Tayo, and then Elizabeth Temkin.
Good evening, Mayor and members of the city council. I'd like to share to you a message I received from a local resident who has been helping recently detained individuals. This is a message that a resident received from a friend of a detainee, someone who is trying to assist their Spanish-speaking friends through this difficult process. Hello. Last night, I was able to speak to a longtime friend. He will be deported. Everyone who enters Broadview has the right to make a phone call every day. The issue is that everyone must use the same phone, so the wait lines are long. Once they have access to the phone, they can make a call. When the call is answered, the operator will ask for a credit card number to pay the call. Families should always be ready with a credit card because this might be the only opportunity to speak to them. The call can be as long as needed. The processing center is full of elderly people, breastfeeding babies, and sick individuals. Breastfeeding babies, just so you know. The process, the Mexican consulate visits Broadview every three days. It seems that in most situations, there is little that can be done. As an update, he has now been sent to Detroit. I wanted to share this information so others can be prepared next time. I share this today to make sure our community understands what families are facing when someone is detained. These are our neighbors, and this is our reality. The more we know, the better prepared we can be to support those in crisis and ensure no family faces this alone. If you see something, say something and record it. Call ICER at 855-435-7693 to report ICE. I want to share to you all a personal story. When I was in middle school, there were a lot of raids happening in my community. One day, we started talking to one of our friends and found out he had been living alone for months. You can help avoid this trauma that I carry with me every single day by hearing my friend tell me that he was dropping at a school to work to support his little brother and sister. Don't let that happen here in Evanston. Thank you. Thank you.
Thank you very much. The next speaker is Kate Jagard Tayo, who'll be followed by Elizabeth Temkin, and then Nancy Burke.
Good evening. My name is Kate Jagard Tayo. I live in the 2nd Ward, about seven blocks from here. Thank you for hearing my comments. I really hope this vote on Resolution 93-R-25 prohibiting the use of the city of Evanston property for federal civil immigration enforcement operations and providing direction implementation of the Welcoming City Ordinance is a no-brainer, but I have learned that hope is not enough. I myself encountered ICE at O'Hare a few weeks ago. They surrounded me, ridiculed me, threatened to mace me, demeaned my humanity as I tried to help a fellow human being. That encounter was nothing. The last several weeks have been brutal in Chicagoland, and in particular, in Evanston and Rogers Park, these last few days specifically. Human beings are being snatched off the streets, cornered in alleys, ripped from their cars in front of their kids, beaten, tased, and murdered in the hands of ICE. It sounds insane, and that's because it absolutely is fucking insane. It is a lie that this is being done with papers, with warrants, only to people with criminal backgrounds. All of this is a lie. Yesterday, it happened a mile from my home at Home Depot. Maybe your home, your block, your neighbor is next. The traumatic impact that our communities are facing is something anyone with a shred of decency wouldn't wish on their worst enemy. People in our community are not going to work because going outside is not safe. Parents are keeping their children home from school because they are terrified of what could happen. People are afraid to go to the grocery store for food and other necessities. The communities of the local schools are gathering to protect families and students so that they don't disappear. It is only my white privilege that allows me to do these things without fear. That's it. It's a luck of the gene draw. And still, I tense up at every pickup truck I pass, every excessively large SUV with tinted windows and out-of-state plates, every surly man with vans and sleeve tats. Even the guy wearing a beige weighted vest by the lake today instilled fear. If our city, if this council, has any part in enabling this federal administration's reign of terror, know that you will have to sit with that, with the weight of that, with every breath you take for the rest of your existence. Every drop of blood that shed, every child that separated from their family, every whale that pierces our ears, every neck that's kneeled on, every assault of every kind, it will be on us. Thank you.
Thank you very much. The next speaker is Elizabeth Temkin, who'll be followed by Nancy Burke, and then Luke Harris-Fury.
My name is Elizabeth Temkin, and I am a constituent in the 9th Ward here. And I'm here tonight in support of 93-R-25. First, I'd like to read a brief statement by a community member in Spanish, and that community member could not be here tonight but wanted to share her words with you all. Cuando mi familia decidió mudar a Evanston tenía miedo. En Chicago tenía una comunidad, pero en Evanston no sabía si las personas verdaderamente me iban a aceptar. Porque la verdad es, muchos hablan de inclusión, pero cuando llega a la hora de actuar, no están. Estos últimos meses me he sentido sola. He visto muchos de mis vecinos que siguen con sus vidas normales mientras que yo aún con mi ciudadanía tengo miedo. Tengo miedo no solo por mí pero mi, pero por toda mi comunidad. Lo bonito es que también he tenido la oportunidad de conocer a mucha gente que está haciendo todo en su poder para proteger al pueblo entero. Esto es otra oportunidad, una oportunidad para que nosotros, nuestros líderes, pueden decir: Todos están bienvenidos en Evanston. Así que es con todo mi corazón que pido que hacen todo lo posible para apoyar a todos nuestros vecinos de la violencia que está a nuestro alrededor. When my family decided to move to Evanston, I was scared. In Chicago, I had my community, but in Evanston, I didn't know if people would fully embrace all of me. Because the truth is, although many talk about inclusion, when it's time to act, they don't step up. These last months, I've felt alone. I've seen so many of my neighbors continue with their normal daily lives. Meanwhile, I, even as a citizen, am scared. I'm scared not just for myself, but mostly for everyone in my community. However, I have also had the beautiful opportunity to meet so many people who are doing everything in their power to protect our whole community. This is another opportunity, an opportunity for our leaders to show that everyone is really welcome in Evanston. So does with my whole heart that I ask you to do everything possible to support all of our neighbors from the violence that surrounds us. And I just have one other brief comment to make. Para nuestra familia, amigos, vecinos, no están solos. En comunidad y con comunidad están protegidos y siempre bienvenidos en esta ciudad. Todos pertenecen estar aquí. Seguiremos luchando con ustedes, nosotros nos cuidaremos siempre. En comunidad y con honor estamos con ustedes. To our family, friends, and neighbors in community and with community, you are protected and always welcome in this city. You all belong here. We will keep fighting with and for you, and we are honored to be in community with you. Thank you.
Thank you very much. The next speaker is Nancy Burke, who'll be followed by Luke Harris-Fury.
Hi, I'm Nancy Burke, 5th Ward. Grateful to have the chance to speak to you. Part of what I do in my day job is I supervise several mental health clinics. I supervise the supervisors, who every day are going to sit with parents to figure out safety plans, what to do with their kids when they're deported. They're figuring out how to run groups for DACA students, how to run groups for kids who have never grocery shopped before and don't know how to do it, but have to because their parents are afraid to go to the grocery store. This is daily life in these neighborhoods. I don't want Evanston to be one. That's why I'm here in support of this resolution. I think that we made a real impact when we instituted a reparations program. I think that, you know, it really made a difference once, just as, you know, I want to show up, because if I show up, it makes it easier for someone else to show up. I think that if Evanston can institute such a program, it will make it easier for other countries, other counties, other cities, other municipalities to do the same. I think it's absolutely essential that we do not allow our families to be ripped apart. It is tragic what is happening. I see it every day, and I can't allow this to happen in my city. I would be shocked if this happened in my city. Thank you.
Thank you very much. The next speaker is Luke Harris-Fury.
Hello, my name's Luke Harris-Fury. I use the "he" pronouns. I live in the 9th Ward, and I'm the pastor at Grace Lutheran Church, which is also in the 9th Ward. First, thank you for receiving these comments and for the work that you all do. I'm here to urge you to pass the resolution that prohibits the use of ICE on our city property. As a person of faith, we are called to stand up for and care for the immigrant. That's one of our core tenets, is to love other people. And as you've heard others say, people are terrified in our city. The ICE will show up and kidnap them, as they have others here. They're unable to leave their houses, they're unable to work. And so at all costs, we should do what we can to protect them by all means possible. And we also have the duty to stand up against Christian nationalism in all its forms, which is this current presidency, this current administration, because it is not true Christianity that they are leading with that does not welcome the immigrant, as we are all called to do. And so maybe this is less for you all, these comments, because I would hope and trust that you all will pass this resolution, but maybe more that we're showing up for the people at home and telling them that we're doing everything we can in our power to make sure their voices are promoted and heard and that they are safe in this city. Thank you.
Thank you very much. This concludes the list of folks who signed up on the sheet to speak in person. We now move to those who signed up online. We'll begin with two individuals who signed up online to speak in person who I believe are not here, but of course can speak if I'm wrong about that, Carrie Kochfer and Alexis In that case, we'll move on to the online portion of this evening's public comment with Priscilla Giles. All right. It looks like Ms. Giles is not able to unmute. If you hear us, please send a written comment, and we'll make sure to circulate it to council immediately. This concludes public comment for the evening. We now move on to special orders of business. Does anyone have a motion relative to item SP1?
Can someone speak online?
Yes, there are no, I didn't notice any signups besides Ms. Giles. The other signups I saw were for AMPW. Ms. Davis, did you want to speak during council as well?
I did, yes.
Yep, go ahead.
Hi, hi, everyone, councils, and Mayor Biss, and Luke Stowe. Thank you so much for a long night, which you have many of them. I'm up with you some of them, but thank you so much for at least listening to this. I came to talk about A7, which is the, Musk has asked for some additional funding for the environmental equity investigation. But I must just say this, really. We must all do something. We all must fight this evil and what has happened. I am so grateful that I live in Evanston and know where there are people that are out here each and every day trying to make it better for their brother and their sister. So with that said, we all must do something. Anyway, so I'm hoping that council will allow the change order in the amount of $46,244 for this contract. This, even more, listening tonight to people talking from the depths of their souls for other people and themselves. And this is the same thing that we've been trying to fight for at least five years. There may be council members that don't know that a city council in September of 2020 okayed what we are doing today ended up in the EEI. And although, yes, it is extra money, and money is money, and I know we don't have it in many ways, but this is about spending money that helps us listen to people in the community and their opinions. And I don't know any other way to do it, but to do it through some of the ways that people are doing it now. So I'm hoping that you will vote in favor of this extension, so that we can finish the public engagement and get a report by the end of the year. Again, if you don't live like each other lives, if you don't live low-income, if you don't live being black in America, if you don't live, you know, Latina at this point, where people may have thought they would never touch me, they're touching you. And I don't know why anyone would think that. If we continue to have the kind of government we have, we will, who's to say, when you will also be tapped on your shoulder or your business will be taken from you. So that's all for tonight. Thanks to you all for being up so late, and I appreciate each and every one of you for what you do. Thank you.
Thank you very much. This concludes public comment for the evening. Now, I believe, is that correct? In that case, is there a motion relative to item SP1?
Mr. Mayor, I'll move approval of Resolution 93-R-25 prohibiting the use of the city of Evanston property for federal civil immigration enforcement operations and providing direction on implementation of the Welcoming City Ordinance.
Second.
Councilmember Hadekatis moves approval of Resolution 93-R-25. Councilmember Nusma, seconds. Is there any discussion? Seeing none, will the clerk please take the roll?
Councilmember Kelly?
Aye.
Councilmember Harris?
Aye.
Councilmember Isles?
Aye.
Councilmember Nusma?
Aye.
Councilmember Davis?
Aye.
Councilmember Rogers?
Aye.
Councilmember Hadekatis?
Aye.
With seven voting in favor and none voting against, the motion carries. The resolution passes, and I know that staff will be working to implement the resolution immediately. I just want to quickly thank those who came to speak tonight for what you're doing outside of this building and for your really clear call on all of us to do everything we can. I was particularly struck by the comment that Ms. Temkin read in Spanish about this dichotomy we're all living, where our community is literally under attack by our federal government, and people are being terrorized, and also, life goes on as usual for a lot of people. And I think all of us have a moral duty, in this case, not to allow life to go on as usual, even if we happen to be the privileged few for whom that's an option. Instead, we all have to step up and do absolutely everything we can at all times. You guys are doing that, others in this community are doing that. I know that others in this community want to do that but aren't quite sure what to do, and so anybody who's hearing me now and has that question, reach out, and I'm happy to put you in touch with anybody who's doing whatever aspect of the work you personally have capacity, bandwidth, or safety to do. But I'll just end where I started. Whoever you are, your community's under attack right now. You don't get to choose that. That shows you, and what you get to choose is how to react. Councilmember Kelly?
Thank you, and fully agree. I'm just wondering if, you know, if there would be much appetite. I'm into, a lot of cities have created sort of offices or contacts within the city of immigrant migrant refugee rights, or I think they're also called Immigrant Affairs Office to really facilitate. I know I get asked all the time and giving numbers, but it'd be really nice if we, you know, I would even propose like, that we, I did reach out to Corporation Counsel Ruggie about partnering with an immigrant legal service firm, like do an RFP, just to consult with, more than anything to have on hand. I think this would be really nice if residents could call 311 and get a direct, because I get called all the time, and I think it would be nice to know that at the city, like I say, many cities across the United States are forming these offices as a local center, as opposed to saying, "Call me and I'll direct you." I think it would be really nice if we considered looking into that anyway, having our own office of immigrant affairs or immigrant and refugee rights.
I certainly won't speak to the details of that, but I'll say, yes, certainly, the game plan in life cannot be just call Daniel and he'll direct you. That was, that's a stopgap. And I want to be super clear, I think we, as a capital C city, have got to do everything we can, knowing that there will be certain things that are best done by volunteers, and that we can both do all the things that we can, and exactly as you suggest, act as an information conduit to make sure that folks know what else is going on and they can sign up to join that as well.
Thank you.
And I'll, I don't know if Luke gave comments about the specific kind of structure of government question relative to an Office of Immigrant Affairs inside the city government?
Yeah, I appreciate that question, Councilmember Kelly. I know you'd reach out to Corporation Counsel, happy to research it further and report back.
Thank you. Thank you very much.
And I think Deputy Manager Karina Sanchez also has something to share.
Good evening, councilmembers. Karina Sanchez, Deputy City Manager. I just do want to inform you that when the new administration came in, the city did host a Know Your Rights seminar. We do have a welcoming page that has a lot of information, not only about Know Your Rights, but also access to different organizations that can assist residents if they have any question. That information has also been shared with 311. We always welcome any ideas to be able to better serve our residents, but we do have some information right now. And we are also looking to update our website with information that is more relevant with the actual activity that's happening right now, especially when it comes to helping families and friends put together contingency plans.
Clerk Mendoza?
Yeah, I just want to thank the council for passing this resolution. It is really a difficult time right now for a lot of our undocumented residents, or in reality, anyone who looks like me. I pray- I pray every day when I send my kids to school, I drop them off in the morning, I'm not able to pick them up in the afternoon, that they're not picked up, and that I hope that, if they are, that I've told them, really because I know they don't know my number by memory, to call 911 and to just start saying that they're my kids, that they've been picked up, and hopefully, my hope is that that will be recorded and that I will know where my kids are. And my kids are citizens. And this is just a reality of all parents who have children who look like me. I was out dining this weekend, and I was with my family, and there was two children buying food for their family to go, so they can walk that over to their family so they can have a sense of normalcy in their lives. While I was dining, I was notified that someone was picked up, and they were trying to get information for a lawyer. And that's just every day, every single day, nonstop. People just in fear. Yesterday, I was asked if I could give someone a ride to go shopping for groceries, because this woman is a single mom with two kids, and she has no family in this country, and she's undocumented, and she has two citizen children. This is the reality, and it really is, like, we're in a time where you, if you see something, you have to say something, you have to pull out your phone, you have to record, because people's rights are being violated. And maybe your phone or the video that you record is the only thing they can use in court to show that their rights were violated, that they were picked up without a warrant. So please, if you see something, say something. Call the ICER hotline, the 855-435-7693 number. And if you have a family member, or a friend, or a loved one, or someone who you employ, make sure you can help them navigate some of these services or let them know about them. If you have someone that you employ that isn't showing up for work, consider to continue paying them if you can afford it. You know, it is going to suck for you to cut your own lawn for a few weeks, but just do it. Do it and keep paying them. And I know it's hard to clean your own house, but keep paying the person who cleans your house. Just clean your house for a few weeks. Just help people out in the best ways that you can so they can be protected, and they can stay home, and they can feel safe. It's not that hard, even if you don't have time to be a rapid responder. You can rapidly respond with your pocketbook by continuing to pay the person that gives services in your home. Thank you.
I just want to add one, it was really practical. If you haven't memorized the number, write it down. I think, try to memorize the number. Thank you, Ru, it's 855-435-7693. It is important. If you see ICE kidnapping our people or acting, or visibly on the street, call that number. That information needs to be shared, because when you share that information with ICIR hotline, it gets transmitted to people who can then take action to keep themselves safe, or people who can be involved in rapid response. So the, I would just say, for everyone, whatever your bandwidth is, make sure you have that number with you, and do not be frightened of using it if you actually see ICE in our community. Councilmember Nusma?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Indeed, this was a no-brainer, at least for me, I assume, for my colleagues on the council to pass this resolution. I'm proud to live in a community where this kind of resolution is possible. At the same time, I am so profoundly sad that this kind of thing is even necessary, and so angry with the leadership of this nation that is really going against what this country stands for, what this country was founded on aspirationally, and over the last two and a half centuries has worked to perfect. And I do believe that we, as a community, can come together. I think I am firmly resolved that we can get through this as a community if we do come together, and I am personally willing to do what it takes. And if there's anything that the city of Evanston can do in addition to what we are doing already, I look forward to taking those steps as well. I also want to pick on some, pick up on something that Pastor Luke said regarding Christian I want to condemn in the strongest possible terms the people who look like me, who say they worship the same God, to really look at what the Christian religion is all about and answer for themselves if they are doing the right thing. Thank you.
Thank you very much. We now move on to the consent agenda. Are there items that folks would like to see removed from the consent agenda? Seeing none, I would entertain a motion. Sorry, Councilmember Davis?
I just wanted to point out that that would be crazy if, like, that's the first time this has happened since I've been on council, that we're not pulling anything from the consent agenda. So we should all play the lottery today, because...
Well, to make sure that we get out of here quickly enough to go buy our lottery tickets, I would entertain a motion. I move approval of the consent agenda.
I second it.
Councilmember Haddadis moves approval of the consent agenda with these zero exceptions previously named. Councilmember, I think Harris seconded. Will the clerk please take the roll?
Councilmember Kelly?
Aye.
Councilmember Harris?
Aye.
Councilmember Isles?
Aye.
Councilmember Nusma?
Aye.
Councilmember Davis?
Aye.
Councilmember Rogers?
Aye.
Councilmember Haddadis?
Aye.
With seven voting in favor and none voting against, the motion carries, and the consent agenda passes. Now, call of the wards, Councilmember Kelly.
We'll be holding a budget meeting for wards one, four, and seven on November 4th, and the time to be, we'll announce the time, but that will be a virtual meeting. I think that's all for now.
Did you say?
November 4th?
November 6th.
Six, I'm sorry, I apologize. November 6th, wards one, four, and seven. Thank you, that's all.
Councilmember Harris?
Thank you. She had me nervous. I'm November 4th, so tentatively, second, sixth, and fifth will be holding a budget meeting, and the standard second ward meeting will be October 21st.
Councilmember Isles?
I need to move my office hours again because we're meeting next day for the comprehensive plan, so it will be moved to Wednesday at Hoosier Mama's from 6 to 8, next Wednesday.
Councilmember Nusma?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. There will be a joint ward meeting November 4th, Tuesday. We're going to get into the Putting Assets to Work program, that's wards two, three, and four, Tuesday the 4th, followed by Thursday the 6th, the joint ward meeting with wards one, four, and seven to talk about the budget. Thank you.
Councilmember Davis?
The joint ward meeting that Councilmember Kelly mentioned, and also to small business owners on Central Street, if you could please complete the parking survey that I sent out trying to see what we can do to make parking better for small businesses.
Councilmember Rogers?
Thank you. I have a ward meeting this Thursday at the animal shelter. I'm asking anyone who can and who wants to attend to please bring something off their donation list, animal food, dog and cat food, as well as cat litter, to help them cover off on the things they need for the animals they take care of. As Councilmember Haddadis mentioned earlier, October 29th at 6:00 PM, we'll be having a budget meeting for three, eight, and nine, with the location yet to be determined.
Councilmember Haddadis?
Yep. This Wednesday, October 15th, from 6:45 to 8:45 in room B of the Prieto Center, we will be talking about putting assets to work. We will also be getting a update on the Love Your Block grant program, year one. We will be, there's two years of that program, and we'll be planning towards next year for that, and want to get all the input possible that we can get from residents about putting assets to work, and want to start that off. So hope to see a lot of people there.
Now, Councilmember Nusma is recognized to make a motion.
Pursuant to five Illinois compiled statutes, 120/2C, I move that the city council convene into executive session to discuss agenda items regarding litigation.
Second.
These agenda items are permitted subjects to be considered in executive session as enumerated exceptions under the Open Meetings Act as set forth in five ILCS 120/2C, Section 11.
Councilmember Nusma moves that the city resolve itself into executive session for the reason just enumerated. Councilmember Harris seconds. Will the clerk please take the roll?
Councilmember Kelly?
Aye.
Councilmember Harris?
Aye.
Councilmember Isles?
Aye.
Councilmember Nusma?
Aye.
Councilmember Davis?
Aye.
Councilmember Rogers?
Aye.
Councilmember Haddadis?
Aye.
With seven voting in favor and none voting against, the motion carries, and at 8:51 PM, the city council resolves itself into an executive session to begin immediately in the council library.